Okay, good morning and welcome to the June 13th Board of Supervisors meeting for Lake County. We'll call this meeting to order and start with a moment of silence. You have one?
Yeah. So unfortunately, I believe it was June 11th, there was a tragic accident just outside of Lake County, and one of our local residents passed away, and his wife is currently fighting for her life. So we lost Ronnie Boyd from the city of Clear Lake. Every death has an impact to those that knew them. This one is having massive ripples in the community. This was a longtime resident, a father to many, a brother to many, whether you were family or not. This was a very close person to a lot of folks, and this has a lot of impact. He was also a firefighter. I believe he started out at the Lake Fire Protection District, eventually graduated, moved on to Cow Fire, became a fire captain, and his last post was in the Humboldt Region Cow Fire area. It's unfortunate how quickly and how tragic things can happen, just on a random day, and very sad for the community, very sad for the family. I know that family very, very well, and I want to not only keep Ronnie in our hearts and prayers today, but definitely keep his wife Deana as well in our hearts and prayers in hopes that she makes it through her tragic harm that came to her from that tragic accident.
Okay, thank you, and I have one as well. Does anyone else have one today? Okay. I'm going to read the obituary for Eileen Hoberg. Eileen was born in Seattle, Washington, moved to San Francisco when she was four years old. Eileen was a champion ice skater and professional model. For many years, Eileen was on the matchbooks and brochures of the Fairmont Hotel, and also on the album cover Dance atop Nob Hill. Eileen married George Hoberg Jr. in 1957, and together they ran the Country Club Restaurant at Hoberg's Forest Lake Golf Course on Cobb. After they retired in 1993, George and Eileen enjoyed traveling to England, Scotland, Ireland, and Hawaii. Eileen is survived by her daughter Sandra and Terry and son-in-law Howard, and by their beloved grandson Joseph. Husband George and son-in-law Warren Fox preceded her in death. At Eileen's request, there will be no services. Eileen suggested that you take an old lady to lunch in her memory. A bottle of wine would make the meal complete. The family wishes to thank the staff at Orchard Park Retirement Home in Clear Lake. They were kind and thoughtful and took wonderful care of Eileen in these past seven years. As Frank Sinatra is saying, "Parting is not goodbye, and we'll be together again." And the Hobergs were a fixture in Cobb for many, many decades, and I have really fond memories of Eileen and her family and the businesses that they ran. Supervisor Crandall, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have, oh, I'm sorry, do we have any extra items?
I have no items today.
No extra items, okay. And for the consent agenda, I have 5.1 will be pulled. Are there any others? Supervisor Spatier?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull items 5.19 and 5.24.
Item 5.1 requests, I know you've already pulled it. We request that that not be taken up later today. It will be moved to the July 11th meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the public wish to pull an item? Check the Zoom room. Not seeing any hands. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve items 5.2 through 5.18, and 5.19 through 5.23, 5.25, and 5.26.
Except it's 5.20 through 5.23.
Oh, I thought you said 4. I thought, okay, there we go. Is that okay?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Ah, I see.
Okay. So we will move on to our timed items. Our 9:06 a.m. item 6.1, Public Input. Do we have anyone in the chambers of public input today? And I'm not seeing anyone in the Zoom room either, so we will close this item and move on. 6.2, 9:07 a.m. item Pet of the Week, and we have Animal Care and Control.
Good morning. I am Officer Sadie Egan with Lake County Animal Care and Control. And today with me, we have Jake and Officer Dan Gard. Jake is up for adoption. He's been with us close to a month now. He is a three-year-old Shepherd Anatolian mix. He gets along great with other dogs. We currently have a video on our Facebook page of him playing with another dog called Red. And we also have TikTok now. The links will be on the Facebook page to find those links of the dogs playing together. He is up for adoption, and we have about 52 other animals available up for adoption at the shelter. We are located at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. Our phone number is 263-0278. You are more than welcome to come to the shelter and see the animals we have available for adoption, and see Jake and many others. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jake.
Big guy, man.
He must have ran here.
Okay, thank you so much. Our 6.3, 9:08 item is Presentation of Funds to the Lake County Senior Centers. And we've got checks here.
I'm just saying hi to somebody. I didn't see it was in the audience.
Okay, so today, we have our directors from Highland Springs Seniors, Highland Springs, Joyce Overton, do you want to come on up? And Lakeport Senior Center, Lisa Amaro. And Live Oak Seniors, Danny Hobbs. Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, Dolores Farrell. Middletown Senior Center, Lori Tourville. And Upper Lake Senior Center, Claudine Pedrenelli?
Pedrenelli.
Pedrenelli. If you want to come on up, and we can present these checks. Supervisor Spatier and I were on the ARPA Committee, and that's when we received over $12 million from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act. And one of the things that we committed to was investing in our senior centers and setting the senior centers up for the next, the years to come, to support our community. We know our senior community is always growing every year, and there's always going to be a need for Lake County for, you know, excellence in our senior centers. And we know that there's been some, some things that could be fixed, some roofs and some other investments that could be made. And so each of these senior centers are getting a check for $50,000. I don't know if there's something that you want to add?
I just want to add that I appreciated the conversation that we had when we first kind of brought this to the board. I think that staff did a good job of working with each senior center to figure out how those funds can be utilized to the best of their needs, rather than setting up a box that they needed to figure out how to work within. And I sure hope that you get the best of the $50,000 so that your seniors can benefit the most out of that money.
Okay, so I've just passed out the checks to the supervisors where the senior centers are in the districts. And so if you'd like to take a moment and present the checks?
All right, we'll start with District 1 then.
There you go.
Excellent. So, thank you for the backstory there, Chair Pieska. And thank you to the ARPA Committee for moving this forward. And just as it was said, when this conversation came to the board, we wanted to make sure that we not only followed through and got the money to you, but also made it a little simple, a simple process to get it to you. Reimbursement was a conversation that started out, but we knew that getting the funds to our senior centers was so important. So happy to present a check for $50,000 today. We're all going to take a picture at the end? We'll do a whole picture?
Yeah, let's do it.
One at a time. So I'd like to present a check from the County of Lake to the Middletown Senior Center. And Lori Tourville, thank you very much for all the work that you do and the board down in the area. I know you just had a successful chili cook-off. And here's a check for $50,000.
I do want to thank you, and you did make this very simple for us, considering the grants that we end up writing and doing and applying for. This was pretty much the easiest $50,000 we've ever gotten. So I do want to thank you for that very much.
So I was wondering if you could share with us what plans you have for upgrades, if you've got them yet?
Yeah, so my first thought was, we had a few different things that we could do with this money specifically. And my first thought was a generator, because when the power shut-offs go on or power goes out, we have a walk-in that we've lost a lot of food that way. But, so I sent it on to Lars Ewing to try to get an approval, because I need to go through the county. And he actually told me that the library had just gotten a grant, and this is something we've always wanted to do, but we're going to put it now instead towards solar. So it looks like we're going to be able to have solar. And our PG&E bills can run up to $2,500 a month. So I believe the solar with a backup kind of generator is going to be even more ideal. So we're going to be working with the county to put this money back into the building. So that'll really be, it'll save us a bundle of money. So that's what our plan is.
That's great, thank you.
So we just heard a presentation from our AAA, our Area for Aging Agency, that we're going to have an increase of 20% of our senior population in the next 30 years, I think it was. This is only going to help out for a short amount of time. There's going to be more needs, and, but I'm so happy that we're able to provide this. I know our senior centers are always giving and always trying to find ways to fundraise and find the funding to keep that giving going. From the March, March for Wheels?
March for Meals?
March for Meals, to the food that you're distributing at the senior center, to the programs you're offering. One of the things that's not in front of senior center is senior support center. The amount of support that our seniors receive from having the friendship, having the social environment to come into, to break that loneliness, to add some activities in their life, that is such a necessary part of just living. And the amount that you do, I know in the city of Clear Lake is immense. It's appreciated. I know this does go a long way for now. I know the future is not always simple, but it's the best we can do right now, and I know you're going to put it to good use.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. What will you be doing?
Well, one of the things we're going to be doing is making some outdoor space. We have a patio, but it's not covered. It still needs a lot of work. It's starting to kind of fall apart. So we're going to make some outdoor space, because our seniors tend to take a chair out into the dirt and sit underneath the trees. So we thought it would be nice if they could sit outside and have a covered area where they could sit outside and eat lunch. And our center is growing a lot. I mean, we're serving an average of 65 to as much as almost 90 a day. So, you know, this money will go for a lot of food now. And, you know, we're going to try to use some of it to make our seating areas, some tables, chairs, that are better, because ours are falling apart. So, so that's kind of the idea that we're going to be using, trying to make the facility a little more available and comfortable for our seniors.
I'm going to keep going in that direction, so I'll start with Live Oak. Just wanted to, you know, be, just let everybody know how important I feel this is, because our senior centers do provide a lot of services. I know that Live Oak was hit really hard during COVID. They started back up, I want to say March, April timeframe. And so they're looking for volunteers, they're looking for initiatives, anything. I know all senior centers need these types of resources. A lot of times, I said this before, actually, when the Elks came forward, there's a lot of people talk about helping the seniors and things of that nature. But the actions sometimes don't go along with that. And so this is one of those actions that I appreciate seeing. And so I know that you'll do some good work with this, and here's your check for $50,000. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. This, this really was, I've applied and received many, many grants, and over the years, but nothing was as easy as this. And it should be a painless process, where, you know, the money is going to such good use and so needed. We'll be putting in a new solar system, saving us thousands of dollars a month for years to come. So this is genuinely appreciated.
All right. Lucerne Alpine Senior Center. And I have to say, I work pretty frequently with this group. They host the Central Region Town Hall and many other events. They just had the spaghetti feed, and it was very successful. Always looking for ways to, you know, get funding to serve the public. When we had the snow event, emergency event, they were right there, one of the first ones to ask, hey, let's bring some people here. How can we get a generator? How can we get anything to serve the public? And so I just, you know, for me, I've always, they're a central location in my district, and it's always a place where I know that folks from Nice and sometimes Upper Lake have to come. So for me, this is a very important donation as well. And so we're not donation, but, you know, grant as well. So I know they're going to do some good work with it, and I know that they're looking at more options. And I know all of the senior centers are looking for fundraisers in that case, because this, this money comes and goes quick. There's so many different aspects to it. Paying for meals is just one thing, but when they have to consider delivering these meals, they have to think about keeping them warm, keeping them cold. And they haven't even got to that point yet sometimes. And so all of these things are looming above them to get work done, but they, they're trying to figure out how they can get this funding to, you know, build a foundation to do it. So here is the check for $50,000.
Well, I'm the new kid on the block. When I walked into Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, it took me back to San Francisco 3rd grade. It's a beautiful old building. We have lots of space, but in that old building with lots of space, we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be worked on. This $50,000 will allow us to provide access to our other door with a ADA compliant ramp, the curb. We've already updated our bathrooms, we've repaired the roof. So this money is going to help us continue to rehab the building, to make it really comfortable. We put some heat and air conditioning splitters in there so that our seniors are comfortable. So we're really glad to get this, so we can continue to bring this building up to where we want it to be, so that the seniors are comfortable and safe when they come there. And so we really appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
And Upper Lake Senior Center is included, but they're not here at this time, so theirs will be mailed. And so, yeah, we'll go ahead and move on from there.
We're not done yet.
Lisa, I got a big fat check for you here. Woo! Tell us a little bit about what's going, really? Tell us what's been going on at Lakeport Senior Center and how this is going to help you with your mission.
Oh, absolutely.
No, you have to tell me first before I give it to you.
I guess I can take the check and run. I mean, check, take, check and run. Thank you all so, so very much. So Lakeport Senior Center roof has been like a C for the last, well, since we took over in 2020. So we are not repairing the roof. We are actually redoing the roof. And because of generous donations from the roofing contractor that we used, we'll also have funds available to replace a 30-year-old air conditioner. So we're, we're there already. I was just waiting for the check, so.
I'm waiting for Wednesday, because I hear you have some hot bingo going on Wednesdays.
Some hot bingo on Wednesdays, absolutely.
Is it?
I believe it's at 1 o'clock.
Okay, little, you know, best kept secret, hot bingo. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming. And you may have noticed that Kelseyville Senior Center is not here. We're working on a separate project with them, so more to come, hopefully this summer about that. But we appreciate everything that you do and the investments that you make in our community. And we know this money is going to go a long way to supporting our seniors. Do we have any questions or input from the chambers? Let me check the Zoom room. I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay, then let's all take a picture. Everybody?
Yes, we did it. Thank you so much.
Okay, our 6.4 item, did we lose someone?
Yep.
Okay, our 6.4 item, 9:15 a.m., Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing June 19th, 2023 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, a Day of Observance. And Vice Chair Simon will be making this proclamation.
Who wants to come up for the proclamation?
No, I won't do it on my own. All right. Proclamation Recognizing June 19th, 2023, Juneteenth National Freedom Day, a Day of Observance. Whereas, boy, this could have been a bit, a little bit bigger. America does not only celebrate our independence on July 4th, but on June 19th each year. We look back to this day in 1865, on which General, on which Union General Gordon Granger led troops into Galveston, Texas, to announce the end of the Civil War and the insidious institutions of slavery. Thousands of enslaved people in Texas were among the last to learn of their independence, tasted hard-won freedom from the first time, for the first time. And whereas, over the next several decades, African-Americans who journeyed out of the South seeking better lives brought Juneteenth celebrations with them. The thousands who settled in California, especially in Los Angeles and the San Francisco Bay area, taught our state that America's struggle for independence did not end in 1776 or 1865, but continues to this day. And whereas, take, take time to reflect on the ongoing cause of freedom for Black Americans, remembering that though General Granger's announcement in 1865 called for absolute equality, the vision was and remains far from complete. And whereas, let us celebrate how far we have come and take stock of how far we must go, and honor all of thee, those who have lived and died in pursuit of a more perfect union. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, a Day of Observance, passed and adopted the 13th day of June, 2023, and signed by the Chair of the Board, Jessica Pieska. And I just want to thank the board and with admin. You know, this is one of the newer recognized days that we've done here at the county. You know, we did it in, you know, a ceremonious way. Was it 28? Give me the right date, somebody, probably 2021?
I think it was two years ago.
Two, all right. And now we've made it an actual holiday for the county. We will not, we will be observing that by not having a board meeting this next week. And, you know, we'll just continue along those, those lines of pushing forward where we, where we need to go. So I don't know if anyone would like to come up and accept this award. I'm standing up here alone, or if there's anybody on, on the, thank you.
This is a big deal.
If you'd like to say, very big deal.
It's a big, very big deal. It's amazing to me how many people don't know about Juneteenth. And it is a big deal when a whole community understands and recognizes. So you just learned something today that you didn't know before. You know, slavery was not over for the folks in Texas. It was two and a half years later when they found out. So can you imagine finding out that it's been two years and a half, and I could have walked away? They didn't know that. So that's what Juneteenth is about. And it's a big day for African-Americans. We celebrate it just like we celebrate the Fourth of July. It is an Independence Day. So thank you, Lake County. That was a, I didn't realize this was going to happen today.
You get a picture? Yeah, and I did just want to thank you for coming up. And, you know, as a young man, I did spend some time in Texas, playing a little bit of football. And I tell you, they do it right in Texas. They do a great job, the entire state. Everybody gets together with the families and, you know, it really is something, you know, that you should go to Texas and experience it, because they really, they do a great job. Hopefully California will just keep improving. But to understand that day and how important it is to young folks, and I was a very young man, playing football with a lot of gentlemen that, you know, we were living together, and it was, it was an eye-opening experience. So, you know, I just want to let you know that as a young guy, I got to experience that. Coming from the tribal community, it was very powerful to understand where they were going with everything. So I just wanted to say that. I had to say that. I got to experience it firsthand.
The MAC is having a Juneteenth celebration. And I just want to say, I was there last year. It's a great opportunity to go out. It's, it's at night, it's outside, and you're going to hear some good music and just celebrate Juneteenth. So it, and it is on a Monday, so you have to go to work the next day. Some people were complaining about that. But that's when June 19th is, it's on a Monday. So come out to the MAC and celebrate. That's a free commercial for, for the.
Yeah, and thank you. Lisa will yell at me, because I didn't say that. So June, and they've been doing that event now for quite a long time. I need a picture with you.
It's not running after her.
Do we have anyone in the chambers that would like to give input on this item? Or anyone in the Zoom room? Not seeing any?
It's multitasking.
Yes, we got it.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, perfect timing for our next item. Our 9:30 a.m. item, 6.6, Presentation of Proclamation Celebrating Michelle Carson as the first Lake County recipient of Tourism Ambassador Institute's International CTA of the Year. So come on up. You come up. And I know we have a lot of CTA support, so why don't you all come up too? And we can all stand behind Michelle here. Come on up. This is a really big deal. Yeah, come on up, all our CTAs. Come on up back here.
And that, no, those that know me well know I'm crying already. And that, no, those that know me well know I'm crying already.
Come on up. Oh, we have people for that. Okay, so Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Celebrating Michelle Carson as the First Lake County Recipient of Tourism Ambassador Institute's International CTA of the Year Award. Whereas, tourism and recreation are primary drivers of Lake County's economy, with Dean Runyon and Associates estimating countywide travel-related spending at $175.8 million in 2022 alone. And whereas, Lake County is unique among the Tourism Ambassador Institute's 30-plus Certified Tourism Ambassador CTA programs in more than 20 states in that it is chaired and overseen by volunteers. And whereas, Michelle Carson and the CTA Core Committee dedicate countless hours on an annual basis partnering with Lake County Chamber of Commerce, Lake County Unified School Districts, various local businesses, business associations, and many other collaborators to educate new ambassadors and raise awareness of Lake County's communities are as truly unique and outstanding recreation and vacation destinations. And whereas, Michelle Carson has been described as the shining star of this innovative program, hosting adventure events that enrich and inspire, and recently collaborating with Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee on securing grant funding to produce signage and other materials to improve angler's experience when visiting Clear Lake. Bassmasters Magazine, 2020, Best Bass Lake of the Decade. And whereas, Michelle Carson has been named the Tourism Ambassador Institute's International CTA of the Year and is the first Lake County CTA to earn this remarkable and prestigious designation. And whereas, she has somehow managed to accomplish all of this and more while serving with unparalleled dedication and creativity as client relationship manager for Strong Financial Network, supporting the well-being of countless Lake County residents. Now therefore, it is our Board's privilege to celebrate and wholeheartedly congratulate Michelle Carson on this extraordinary honor and express our deep gratitude for her many-faceted efforts to bring opportunity and vibrancy to the lives of Lake County-connected people adopted this 13th day of June 2023, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors.
Well, obviously, this is extra special, but I.
What is that?
Now we've done it.
We're done. I just want to say especially thank you to you and the whole entire Board for recognizing all of us and so many more who couldn't be here today on the great work, the hard work that everyone's doing. We strive hard, very hard, to create a welcoming environment and community for visitors and for just community members and to help with the positive impact on our economy. So we thank you guys for the recognition. It's, it takes a village, I keep saying, and thank you all for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's talk a little bit about this CTA program, why it's important and how you can do it. So I think I did my training in 2019. It's a long time ago. And so it's a four-hour, are any of you Board members CTAs?
I might have expired again. I've done it twice.
Okay, so you take off.
We're working, we're working on an express plan to get you recertified. Okay?
It's an amnesty program.
Yes. And you'll be the first.
So it's a four-hour program.
Yes.
And you learn all about Lake County. And then the idea is that we have ambassadors embedded all throughout our community. So whenever someone runs into anyone, question, where do I eat? What should I do this weekend? We have this whole army of volunteers prepared with all of the answers.
Yes.
To support our economy.
Yes.
So thank you for everything that you do.
Absolutely, thank you.
This is incredible. And also, it wasn't mentioned in the proclamation, but you're making a tour of our municipal advisory councils also, aren't you? You did come to the Cockberry Council.
Yes, I did. So we're going, yes, yes, absolutely. We're trying to hit everyone, yes.
Yeah, so that's even more time driving around at night all over the county. Okay. So I'm going to open it up. I know there's probably some other people here that would like to speak.
Hi, thank you Supervisor Pyska, Laura McAndrew-Sammell. I'm the CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And it has, it has been the Lake County Chamber's privilege to take over this program when the County of Lake didn't, you know, couldn't provide that anymore. And so working with Michelle is such an inspiration. She is so open to thinking about new ways to do things and so good at really inspiring people to want to do great things for our community. So you are a shining star, Michelle, so thank you.
Anyone else? So one of the things that Vice Chair Simon is always talking about is how we tell our story. And if you've grown up in, in the county, then you've, you've known some of our stories have been rocky. And this is our opportunity where we, we, we talk about our lives. And, and I always say that if you live in Lake County, you live a vacation life. Everybody wants to have this life. And so this is just one more opportunity where we're training all of these people to tell our best story about Lake County and really spread that word.
Absolutely. Can I just add one thing about the program? So when you go through the training, the backend of the training is all on customer service. And one of the things I noticed when I first moved up here was, you know, we're a community of small businesses. And I come from big companies that have HR departments and all of that training. So to be able to have this as a service to all of our small businesses to get that good customer service training, along with all the history and everything going on with Lake County, really helps our whole community as, as a whole. So I encourage others and everyone out there in Zoom land to join us. We have a, our next class is in August.
Okay, anything from the Board? Supervisor Spatier?
So I was the first class of CTA. We did it in the Courthouse Museum, that's right. Yes. Then my second time was in the roller rink at the fairgrounds. But I just visited Arizona for economic mobility. And I brought up the CTA when some people were complaining, how do we talk up a positive story of where, who we are, what's available to do? And I said, you know what? Let me talk to you about a group. And obviously, we're connected to a nationwide group. I know we are unique in the sense that we're all volunteers. And I just want to highlight that and say how much I appreciate the fact that the program continues, the program is thriving, obviously being recognized. You, you are all doing a fantastic job. I was happy to go through it. I learned so much about Lake County by going through the program. I don't care who you are, you should look into this program. You're going to learn a little bit more about why Lake County is amazing. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to give some input here?
I have one quick, one thing. All of us who live in Lake County are ambassadors. I, I mean, I was in it with, with Supervisor, I was in that original group in 2015, and the valley fire came in right after us and it knocked us down, but man, we bounced back. So I encourage everyone, everyone to be an ambassador. You think you've lived here all your life and you know everything? We'll teach you a couple more things, I promise you.
Is there anyone in the Zoom room? Do you want to check in?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. All right, let's take our pictures then. Oh, wait, are you coming up?
I, I was going to stay quiet, but I decided to give the county a challenge. We started this program a number of years ago when I was here in the administrative office. At the time, the county started on a plan to send all of its employees through the CTA program. We do that at the city. I think there's so much negativity that we sort of provide in our own community. And as the largest employer in this county, it would make a big impact if the county would consider doing that again. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Public comment feels confrontational with the proximity.
I know, no, it's not confrontational. So my name is Jennifer Strong, and I'm part of Strong Financial Network. And there are, there are jewels. I grew up here. I'm sixth generation on the land that I live on. Stop it. And so, so I have Lake County in my heart. And I think one of the biggest things that we can do for Lake County is to identify the jewels regardless of where they live. And this particular jewel lived down in, was working at Stanford University and was living down in the Silicon Valley. And really, that jewel was misplaced. It needed to not be at Stanford, it needed to be in Lake County. And when she came here, CTA was one of the very first things that she got involved in. And for the last several years, I've had a front row seat of watching this incredible individual right here take care of not only the people that walk in our door every day, but take care of this county. And she has done it with just pure love in her heart. And she is a true jewel. I don't think I have ever met a jewel such as Michelle. And Lake County is incredibly, incredibly fortunate to have her, probably more so than anyone knows. And especially from watching it every single day, the amount of hours of dedication that she puts into it, but most importantly, the heart that she puts into it is beyond measure. And I can't tell you how proud I am of you. Congratulations.
Michael, you're going to have to pass up.
Last one. As, as Michelle's manufacturer, her. Her, her mom and I have witnessed firsthand the incredible accomplishments of this team and Michelle's leadership. So I just want to say thank you all and keep it going.
I just have to tell a little bit, is this on? Okay. So my name is Gretchen Ferguson. I'm also a CTA with Michelle. Anyways, okay, I gotta calm down for a second. So I just want you to know, I want to tell you exactly the heart of this woman and how I first came to know it. So we all know the big ranch fire that went through, well, it went through my valley. And thank God my house didn't burn down or anything like that. But she, she goes, you know, I need to make some food for them because of course there was a lot of cleanup and we had to gather animals and that we had just let loose and, you know, we had to leave. So she shows up at my house as we're trying to put everything back together with this amazing, like, week-long menu of food for us so that we didn't have to cook because our electricity was still off and everything else. And that's just a very small portion of this woman's heart. And another thing is that we belong to another organization, 100 Women Strong for Lake County. And the moment that we kind of decided, hey, do you want to do this? She's like, heck yeah. And so we, there, we just, she just is amazing. Just jumps in and is an amazing part of, of everything. So anyways, thank you, Michelle, for everything you do. So anyways.
Just kidding, just kidding. No, wait a second. What about the thumbs up thing? Better. Okay, yay, CTAs?
Thank you guys so much. Thanks so much, you guys.
Thanks, Jessica.
That was lovely.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
I know they were fanning themselves.
Let's go out here and let them get back to their meeting.
Okay, our next item is 10, so we'll jump down.
Now you can talk about us.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming and joining us today. We are going to look at, yes? Oh, so do that next. He's right there. Okay. We will move on to 5.24, Approve and Sign the Agreement Between the County of Lake and Clean Lakes, Inc. for the Aquatic Vegetation Management Program for Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023. This was pulled by Supervisor Spatier, and I see we have Director Deleon with us.
I will apologize for pulling this. There's only one reason for me to do so, and that's, I think it's a great segue to understand the work we're doing for the aquatic weeds prior to having a discussion about the algae abatement program that's on the next item. I just think it's good information to make sure that we have right in front of us rather than something that we remember reading in days past.
Okay. Well, good morning. Scott Deleon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. It is kind of deja vu because I'm reading this, this memo in 2011. The Board at that time challenged me as the new Director of Water Resources to come up with a plan. And it's, it's humbling that it's still here. And it's a testament to your Board's dedication and previous Board's dedication to this program. It is working. And it is, and I believe it's helping. You know, the lake is cyclical, you know, periods of drought, periods of, of high water and the, the weed abatement program is, is important because it affects, it affects the use of the lake. We just had this wonderful presentation about tourism and, and when the lake is, is difficult to access because of aquatic weeds, it, it just makes their job and everybody else's job a whole lot harder to, to, to make a positive spin on the recreation of our lake. So we have, you know, in the memo, it talks about, you know, last year, we did a request for proposals. We've been using a company called Clean Lakes for, for many years. They are very, very good. They were the only firm to provide a proposal last year. This is, we're proposing a five-year plan with, you know, every year, we'll come back to you with, with that updated agreement based on the available funding and, and the need. So Clean Lakes has gone out, they've identified the areas that need to get, need to get sprayed, need to get treated. And, and this year's agreement is for $225,000 to, to do the treatment lakewide. So with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Did you have any?
No, I just had a comment because I noticed in the, in the memo, I remember last year we were talking about, you know, the situation in the Keys, and they mentioned the geothermal, and here it is. I know that that funding is used for this as well. And so just highlighting that because it was brought up and here it is being used for the same purpose. So just wanted to note that.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate bringing this forward. Actually appreciate it coming off consensus so we can say this is a good thing. And I was happy to do the invasive weed tour this year, including the aquatic weeds. This is a serious issue. Only question is technical on page one of the proposed agreement shows a initial termination date of June 30th of this year. I assume if this is setting up for year-to-year renewals, possibly the initial term needs to be adjusted in the contract. And I wasn't real clear with it. possibly the initial term needs to be adjusted in the contract. And I wasn't real clear what the renewals got in there. So just a technical question on the initial term of the contract and how it actually gets extended.
So yeah, seeing that, what you're, what you're talking about, we're going to probably want to adjust that to June 30th, 2024. I would also suggest we change the commencement date to today's date. So that'll be June 13th, 2023. And we'll, we come to the board every year. We'll, we'll modify this as, as need and available funding. So we'll be back to your board, even though this is technically a five-year contract. We'll be back to your board next year with the actual agreement.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I'm glad that that question was asked. I kind of had the assumption that it was prepared to go as soon as possible in order to be accomplished. But obviously, if you're suggesting that it might not get accomplished until after June 30th to extend it, here it's asking for us to approve and sign the agreement. And then it says fiscal year 2223. And I'm kind of looking at our county council if we need to say the new termination date or use both fiscal years within our motion.
So the fiscal year reference on the title could certainly be changed if the term, if the term dates under Section 2 would need to be changed. Your board can approve this proposed agreement with the changes incorporated and condition that approval to the, to the contractor's approval of it. Because as it stands right now, the contractor has signed off on this current version. But your board can certainly approve the agreement with the changes and subject to or conditioned on the, the contractor's approval of those changes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I apologize. I may have misspoke there, recognizing that the term is likely related to the fiscal year and the need to get the funds expended. Considering that 17 days, I, I may not suggest that we terminated on June 30th, 2024, but perhaps with the, perhaps make the accrual date deadline as the termination date might be appropriate. That way, the funds, the, the work that gets done after June 30th can still be billed and paid for under this year's, this year's fiscal year. So I'll turn to admin to see if, if that's an acceptable alternative.
Stephen's got his hand up. Go ahead, Stephen.
Hello, board. Thank you. The reason why I had my hand up is actually just before what Director did, Director just said, it is funding that is supposed to be spent by June 30th. It's a new set of funding for next fiscal year. It's a bad timing because of when the weeds are present. June 30th is when the contract should end. And accrual period, if it's for an activity, June 30th or prior, it can be accrued back. And which is the normal case for this contract, which happens every year, kind of in a very tight window.
So are you suggesting just leave the contract language as is and move forward?
Correct, because you'll get the same kind of contract next year. Otherwise, we jump into next year's budget figures. And unless we try to come up with extra funding for next year, we can't pay for both sets of contracts because this is funding source, three different funding sources.
And I'm sure that Director Deleon will figure out how to make that all work.
Apparently so.
And I just want to add, I know that in describing this, that Director Deleon had told me that this is kind of setting up highways within the lake that come from docking areas to make sure that boats have a sort of pathway to get to the center of the lake, which then is deep enough that the aquatic weeds don't mess with the propellers. And as stated earlier from Director Deleon, this is absolutely something we don't want to have a reputation of the impact that can have on those that come to the lake. From a perspective of economics, it's good for us to continue doing this. And from also the perception of the environment, if those propellers start cutting up those aquatic weeds, we are only duplicating the efforts of those weeds to proliferate in our lake. And so we need to provide those pathways so that it doesn't continue to get worse and worse out there with the aquatic weeds. So I see this as having many bonuses. I mainly wanted to pull this so that we can have a conversation about it. But I approve of this contract.
I sure Simon.
Just one, oh, Stephen's gone.
He's still listening.
Stephen, if you're listening, just want to make sure for clarity, like we said, Supervisor Sabatier pulled it. So on our memo here, it says geothermal and transient occupancy tax money. You said it comes from three pots. I just, if you could tell me the three, that would be great.
So the first one is actually ag. Agriculture department is the, whatever is remaining in their budget to meet their calculation for gas tax so that they receive those funding. And then it goes to marketing, economic development, TOT, and then geothermal. And then there's a backstop of budget unit 1781 if it goes over those funding sources.
Yep. Thank you very much. Just wanted to clarify that because the memo said two sources. So just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Did you have something else? Okay. Anyone from the public?
Hello, Chair Piceke, board members. Just a quick question out of my curiosity. What? Alan Flora. I know with, with drought and the low lake levels, there's a lot of additional vegetation around the shoreline. And now that the lake levels are back up, I was just curious if that vegetation growth has caused any sort of abnormal or unique problems this year over previous years.
And I would say not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Anything else from the public? Let's see, anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room? So we can bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, without any changes, I move to approve and sign the agreement between County of Lake and Clean Lakes, Inc. for the Aquatic Vegetation Management Program for fiscal year 2223.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we have a couple seconds.
Do you wish to take up 5.19 since he's in the hot, hot seat at this point in time?
Are you staying for 6.7 in the seat?
I hadn't planned on sitting in the seat, no, but.
Okay. All right. Then yes, we'll do 5.19. A, approve rental agreement between the County of Lake and Kevin Soto for storage hangar number one at Lamson Field for the monthly amount of $300 and authorize the chair to sign. And B, approve rental agreement between the County of Lake and Kevin Soto for storage hangar number two at Lamson Field for the amount of $500 and authorize the chair to sign. Pulled by Supervisor Sabatier, and we have our Public Works Director Deleon here.
Thank you. So the reason I pulled this, this doesn't sit well with me. It's a 10-year contract. There's no increases set within the contract. It's an airplane hangar, and it's $300 a month and $500 a month for another hangar. I'm not saying I want to make a million dollars off of the rental, but it just seems inadequate. And as far as a rental for a 10-year to anticipate that it remains at 300, I, I just at least wanted to pull and have the conversation. I'd like to know if we're, and I apologize, I, I did send some questions to Director Deleon a little late on this one. So I did not expect to get the answers. But are we doing comparables? What's the actual cost to us of having these hangers? Are we doing maintenance? Is there a plan for rebuilding them if at one point they're not adequate to remain? And just seeing at 300 and 500 and it being hangers for airplanes, that I don't know that I could rent a shed for 300, let alone an airplane hangar. And I just kind of wanted to, I feel we're undercutting ourselves. But at the same time, I don't know what the right thing to do is. And I just wanted to open up the conversation.
Okay. This agreement, Mr. Soto was in partners with another, another individual on, on that lease. Mr. Lowen was a business partner with, with Mr. Soto. And Mr. Lowen is retired and wanted his name removed from the agreement. So basically, all we did, and, and we just took Mr. Lowen's name off of the agreement. So the agreement is the same as the one that they were in as, as a partnership. And we've just reassigned it to Mr. Soto. With regard to the, to the costs, county doesn't own a lot of, a lot of equipment at the airport. Most of the buildings and everything are all on private property. This, these two facilities are, and it's hard to even classify them as facilities because that would imply that they, they, they have amenities. These are, these are some pretty rough pieces of equipment. I, I don't have an answer for you for increase monthly or annual increases. Again, we basically patterned the previous agreement. As far as the dollar amounts, I think they're commensurate with the, the, the quality and the value of the, of the building that we're providing.
And again, I don't know right or wrong. Just wanted to pull it to see the rest of the board's perspective on it. I just know that it didn't sit easy for me as I read through this. So I'm okay with moving forward if the rest of the board is, but I definitely wanted to hear from the rest of the board.
What was the length of the previous lease?
I believe it was, I believe it's the same lease.
But it's starting a new 10-year?
We're starting a new 10-year, yes.
So has it been, was it?
I don't have the answer to that. I'm sorry. I, I get that if you want to table this. And I can come back later today with, with additional information if, if, if you wish. I don't have that presently.
Oh, I'd be interested in seeing that.
You asked my question, so.
And just a point of clarification for your members of the board. If there was a, or if there is an original lease, your board may want to inquire as to the status of that original lease with, it was mentioned it was with the two partners, Soto and, and Lowen's. Because if that prior lease or original lease has not been terminated, then this may be characterized, this, the proposed leases that's being presented to the board may be correct, characterized and as amendments to that original lease. And our office can work with staff with that in making those, in making those changes and reflecting those amendments. So that it will be clear that it is an amendment. However, if the original leases were terminated, then these, the leases that are attached to this agenda item would consist of new leases to be entered under new terms and under new parties. So that, that may be a point of, another point of clarification to be made.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, Supervisor Sabatier. I truly do. This is my district. These are not plush facilities by any stretch. And so the pricing consideration, even if we updated it, I don't think it would be substantial. And if we are going to examine hangers and cost recovery and stuff like that, my suggestion would we, we agendize a separate item to do that and talk about all of these. But as to the item at hand, you know, I'm acquainted with Mr. Lowen. He is retired, has some health challenges. Certainly, his request to come off the contract is very reasonable. And I don't see anything unreasonable about the, either the length of the term or the, or the rates being proposed here, just based on the fact that they're premised on a previous agreement. Mr. Soto, Mr. Lowen and Mr. Soto have contributed to our local aviation community. I think those contributions should be valued if we're going to be penny pinching any rents at the hangers. So I'm open to a discussion about airport operations as a whole at some appropriate future time, including any cost recovery or any cost adjustments we need to do for hangar rentals. But I'm ready to move forward with this today.
Yeah, appreciate you pulling the item to at least have the conversation. I think this is something that we definitely need to look at as we're trying to enhance the operations there. But, you know, the work that's been done, you know, I haven't toured these facilities to say, but I know I've been in multiple conversations as we were trying to set up the pilot's lounge, other things that have been done at the airport to help keep them moving forward. So I'm, I'm prepared today to support this as presented.
Do you have anyone from the public? Not seeing any. I would like it to come back just so if we can see, is this, were these rates established 10 years ago? Is this, you know, are we at the tail end of a 10-year lease and we're extending it 10 more years? I would just like to see what this rate looks like in context of the past leases. And it sounds like we have consensus for that. So.
And we need to check on what county council brought up too.
Correct. Right. And did you, look like you have something to say?
Do you want it brought back today or at a future date, the 27th?
The 27th would be probably preferable. If that works for Director Deleon.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we can move to our 10 o'clock item.
Oh, I need to go on Zoom.
6.7, 10 a.m. consideration of project plan for the South Lake algae bloom abatement in the Clear Lake and Clear Lake Oaks area and submit project plan for funding to ARPA committee for their consideration and/or to consider using local assistance and tribal consistency fund and/or to submit as a potential project to Congressman Thompson for the annual congressional community project funding. Supervisor Sabatier and Crandall.
So I'm joining Zoom. If it's possible for somebody to allow me to be a panelist so I can share my screen. Thank you very much, whoever that was. There it is. All right. So thank you very much. Going to present to you things that you are probably well aware of, but want to present to you today also a potential solution. As you know, our lake, being a massively old and natural lake, does have some issues that comes along with it. And one of those issues is the algae that we collect. And most of that algae is collected based on the wind, based on the natural flows into the South Lake area, most specifically into the Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake Arms. And so during the summertime, at one point or another, and it really, it's hard to say the rhyme and reason. Sometimes the lake can be full and we start seeing these algae blooms. Sometimes it's during drought that we see these algae blooms. But overall, at the, by the end of summer, the algae is there, very obvious, has a nauseous scent to it. And it continues to burden both our economy and our health. It does have many health issue components that comes along with it. South Lake areas are heavily impacted again due to the prevailing winds and natural flows. And I thought it just right to show a picture of my predecessor walking through the algae, trying to do something about the algae. In the past, in the city of Clear Lake, sometimes you would see Jeff Smith on the airboat trying to break down. to break down the algae. It has come to our understanding that that is not a solution. I know some people keep asking for that. It is not a solution. In fact, it kind of exacerbates the potential health issues that come along with that by aerating the algae. So we did some research. We found some old things that we've tried before, like we saw the solar bee. That's been tried in the past. Unfortunately, I have a picture of one of the only solar bees that we had in the past, surrounded by massive algae buildup, and part of the problem is that we never really get enough of these, this equipment to be able to make a difference. One in a massive lake such as Clear Lake does not make a difference. However, there is a new technology, AlgeSonic MPC buoy, that uses sonar waves to break down the algae prior to it rising to the surface. When it rises to the surface, that's when it starts to get that mat and the pads that we see from the algae on the surface. This breaks it down so that it can come back down. As you can see, these are the sonar equipment underneath the buoy. It is run by solar. It has, and I'm sure I'll be corrected, because I believe we have people from AlgeSonic here today. It runs on solar, and I believe it has a potential of a 15-year lifespan due to the equipment that's on there. And it is anchored to the lake bed. It also has the ability to collect water quality data and submit it wirelessly. I know in speaking to Water Resources Department, there is excitement about that because right now, we go through Big Valley Rancheria, who does the collection of the data, and I believe it's once every two weeks, I'm kind of looking at Director DeLeon, but I believe it's once every two weeks that they do the data collection over at Big Valley. This would allow for daily data to better understand what weather conditions, what water conditions create the algae conditions that we end up seeing, to better understand and better work with our lake to have better outcomes. Also, the equipment does come with water safety measures. There is a light for the nighttime, and as you saw in the picture here, there's a little floating device next to it as well, though pretty obvious during the day. So just a quick sample off their website of what happens. You have the sonar treatment under the water that stops the algae from rising to the top. Without the AlgeSonic treatment, the algae would just rise all the way to the top, which again creates the nauseous odors, smells, and has a burden on the local economy and the local recreation in those regions. So in working with AlgeSonic, we've received a proposal. This is a map of the South Lake area and the Clear Lake arm. As you can see, it goes from the Maniki Beach all the way down to almost to Anderson Marsh State Park, goes on to the Point Lake View area as well, surrounding that peninsula, and these are, I believe it's 18, I believe it's 18 units in that picture. Then this is the Clear Lake Oaks arm. Again, I believe it's also, maybe it's 14 each, yeah, 14 each. So it's 14 units on the Clear Lake arm area, and again, we've all experienced this, we all see the algae, we all understand the nuisance and the burden that it creates on those who live there, those who want to play there, as well as, again, potential health issues. So we're looking at 14 units in Clear Lake, 14 units in Clear Lake Oaks. The total estimated cost, based on the estimate we received from AlgeSonic, is $1.5 million. The Blue Ribbon Committee did have a conversation about this sonar system. It was approved. However, the Blue Ribbon Committee has not funded this operation. They are looking at the entire lake. So the idea is not only to help the areas that we know that are impacted by algae, but possibly also motivate the Blue Ribbon Committee in saying, hey, we're doing this locally to support this project. You guys get the rest. Right now, we're not seeing that movement as the funding has not been made available. There is a potential extra added cost if we do the data gathering. That would cost approximately, based on the numbers I received, $35,000 per year, and that's both for the Clear Lake area and Clear Lake Oaks area. And so that is the overall presentation that I have. I don't know if Supervisor Crandall wants to add to that. I appreciate working with both Water Resources and Supervisor Crandall to figure out what are our best options. Last year in our drought, we were scared that we would have the same situation and have that, the situation of such a high density of algae. One more time, we're lucky we have a lot of water, but we don't want to stop and not take action. We want to be prepared for the next one.
Thank you. One of the, this topic came up, I want to say, last year or the year before, in regards to the hypolimnetic oxygenation project that UC Davis was basically promoting to do in the Oaks area, and a lot of the Water Resources Department and many others felt that that was not only a short-term fix, and it was an expensive fix that would be funded by the Blue Ribbon funding, or Prop 68 funding. This would be more of an ideal situation to, or project to deal with the algae. And so I think with this, it gives us the opportunity to concentrate on the most affected areas. Every time there is a project discussed in Blue Ribbon, these two areas, Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake, are highlighted pretty often in regards to algae. One of the other things I'd like to, you know, highlight, too, is that we as a county and Blue Ribbon will consistently make concessions and projects, and support projects for economic development. However, algae consistently denigrates our drinking water capability and public health aspect. So I think this is, I think this project could help with that, and I know that, I like the effect of three different options. So in case there isn't support for one, we can constantly look at others to implement this type of initiative. So I don't know if that helps.
No, I appreciate the extra information there. Again, what we're looking for from the board today is approval to keep moving forward, seeking funding. There is potential that ARPA funds are being clawed back due to the timeline of having to spend it by December 31, 2024, so that's an opportunity. We did receive $3 million for the LATCF. Let me know if you want me to tell you what that acronym is. I don't have it off the top of my head right now. And there are other opportunities out there as well, just to make sure that we can make this happen. We do have EJ and Greg from AlgeSonic, and also I do want to highlight William Fox from Water Resources, who has been a strong proponent of the system, and just opening it up for anybody from Water Resources that wanted to speak on this item, as well as from AlgeSonic.
Hello, Board. My name is William Fox. I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator, and I'd just like to speak briefly on this system. Like the board said, we've been interested in this technology for over a year now. It was actually highlighted in the 2017 Clear Lake Sanitary Survey that was done in regards to drinking water impacts, and it did identify this technology as a potential solution to the drinking water impacts. And I know I've been reaching out to some of the water purveyors as well, and this technology really does have the ability to even lower our drinking water costs. We pay some of the highest drinking water rates in the county, and this reduces the amount of chemical treatment that the purveyors need to do, and it reduces the cost for them to actually be treating this water. So these technologies do have the ability to have a payback period even for water purveyors as little as two years. So I do think this is a really good investment, an investment that will pay dividends in drinking water and recreation and water quality benefits to our listed species as well. So I wanted to just give that brief roundabout, and then pass it over to EJ or Greg, if you guys can talk a little bit about more the data collection and how that kind of informs the ultrasound treatments.
And please correct anything I may have said incorrectly, especially the 15 years.
No, that is correct. 15 years, and then one buoy can treat about a 50-acre radius, and they, like you said, they will be lighted. They've had no problems with like vandalism or with like heavy wave action. They've been over in the East Coast during like hurricane season, so they're very, very strong and durable, and they've been tested in some pretty intense environments. And one of the coolest things that I really like about it, and you touched on it, is that data dashboard. So the reason that this technology is really effective is because it collects constant water quality data. I'm pretty sure it's on a 15-minute interval, and that water quality of data informs the ultrasonic treatments. So because we have different genera of cyanobacteria, and it changes each year, we can't just use one type of ultrasound. So this buoy actually collects this data, then informs the ultrasound treatment, and then it can even forecast what type of harmful algal blooms we'll experience in the future. So it's a really, really cool technology and has really great additional benefits, not just reducing harmful algal blooms.
Are there, with this technology, is there just one company that's doing this? Are there competitors? Is this something that we have to?
There's lots of different types of technology available. This has been kind of the forefront of ultrasonic treatments, so it's the most well-regarded, I would say. There's a couple other competitors in regards to ultrasonic treatments, but there are lots of other technologies, like Supervisor Sabatier touched on, like the hypolimnetic oxygenation. There is an ACOM technology, which is basically like taking Clear Lake water and then treating it and putting it back in the lake. So there's different technologies for harmful algal bloom abatement, but this one, we're supportive of it, basically because of the maintenance costs, because of the long-term operating costs, and the flexibility that we do have to expand this project and complement it with additional buoys if we receive more funding.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that, you know, I know that there's, well, we all know that there's a couple of long-term plans to help with some of the nutrient load and sediment that is affecting the algal blooms or, you know, enhancing the algal blooms. Of course, those are long-term, so in the meantime, while we're working on those to move faster, I think it's imperative that, you know, we look at projects as such. I know that with hypolimnetic oxygenation, a lot of statements were made, and in some instances, I was in agreement with the fact that that treats now, but there is a lot of other, a lot of other impacts from further up in the hills and where the nutrient comes from. I think those will be worked on as well, but in the meantime, some of these short-term options or options like the sonar would really help, you know, until we can get some of these other large projects intact.
So do you envision starting in these two arms, and then if it's successful, moving it lake-wide, or is it just going to be this project, these two project areas?
At this moment in time, we're looking at just those two project areas. I know the Blue Ribbon is looking at lake-wide. Hopefully, this could be a partnership with Blue Ribbon where we're doing our part and then kind of pushing them to do their part, which right now, again, they do not have the funding. And part of the reason that I pulled the aquatic weeds is, this year it was 225,000. Typically, it's around 200,000, and we've been doing it since 2011. So we've spent about 2-point-something million dollars over the course of the last 10-plus years. Here, this is 1.5, and it lasts 15 years, and the maintenance and everything else is minimal in comparison. And so to me, it's somewhat of a comparable, and it's also, the aquatic weeds is more focused towards the North Lake area, while obviously, the algae is more focused on the South Lake. But we are seeing algae in other areas. I know Lucerne Harbor is seeing algae and things like that, so that's why supporting the Blue Ribbon Committee and keep doing what they were planning to do, but at least not waiting for others to solve our problems and making an attempt to solve the problem ourselves and seeing what funding is available.
I didn't even get to ask the AlgeSonic, though, if there was a capability after, you know, like you mentioned, would we be able to move some of these buoys to other areas? So that way, once we figure out which areas are also impacting, let's say that everything's basically just, you know, prolifically going to those areas, but there's another spot that can strategically, you know, be treated so that that way it doesn't collaborate in that end of, the end of the lake, would we be able to move it to strategize, you know, some of the load and some of the algae? So I didn't know if AlgeSonic, the representatives could answer that for us.
Yeah, thank you, Board members. So if we see that that water quality trends are down, you know, in a positive way and are staying positive, then we can certainly, you know, look at moving them. We are working on a new way to, you know, deploy the anchor systems so they might be recoverable, but they would require a new anchor system if we were ever to move them to a new location. So that's the only constraint that there would be.
And if you can give us your name, please.
EJ Neefci, AlgeSonic.
Thank you. And can you provide us some information on the data collection and just provide a summary of how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have our standard six, and those are phycocyanin, which is associated with cyanobacteria. We have chlorophyll A, which is associated with green algae or chlorophyll A. We have turbidity, which is associated with just, you know, the algal load that's in the water column. And we also track dissolved oxygen, so that's important for understanding, you know, how much oxygen is in the system, and especially with some of the aerobic species. We have temperature, and above, you know, 25C, 77 Fahrenheit, we're going to be seeing, you know, more risk of algal blooms, so that's another thing that we look at. And also pH, so if we see the pH going up, that's an indicator that photosynthetic activity is also increased. So that's another thing that we track. So that gets reported every 15 to 30 minutes back to our server, and that's what drives our predictive analytics suite that we use to inform our program changes, both automated and also in concert with our dedicated program, project management team that looks at water quality trends every day on the project for the project's duration. So it's not a set-and-forget-it system. We're in for the long haul.
So I have a question. Was the Soto Bay area considered?
We saw that as a hotspot, but in terms of this project, it wasn't.
We were looking at a, we were looking at a project area and trying to also contain the cost.
Right.
Because it's about $50,000 per unit, and just, once we can show how it works, then it's easy to say, yes, let's expand it, rather than trying to deploy in such a large area because our lake is.
Yeah.
But is it in the Blue Ribbon Committee proposal areas? I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember if one of the spots was the spot you're talking about, or do you know off the top of your head, Mr. Neely?
Is Soto Bay, is that located further down, down to the western part of the lake?
No, it's, it's a.
I can also speak to that. Essentially, when we did like our first investigation, LG identified, they used like remote sensing data to identify like certain hotspots around the lake. Soto Bay was one, North Lakeport was one, and then both the Oaks and Lower Arm were other hotspot areas. And the reason that those two areas were selected in the Blue Ribbon proposal was the, Lower Arm was just the density of population as well as water purveyors. So we wanted to maximize the benefit, and so we saw there's three large water purveyors in that Lower Arm that provide a really large service area, as well as a huge population. So it was really just trying to maximize the benefits of the technology.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I'm going to have several questions. We do not intend to be oppositional, but more like tough love. I'm supportive of this, but I'm also supportive of about 15 other projects I saw through the Blue Ribbon Committee process, some of which were also pitched by Water Resources. So my first question is, is this item being brought forward as a potential funding mechanism for the AlgeSonic project that was approved by Blue Ribbon Committee? This looks like a bigger project with more buoys. So is this being pitched to us as a county, or are you trying to bring the Blue Ribbon approved project for consideration of funding support?
So I am not on the Blue Ribbon Committee, so this is not a Blue Ribbon project. This is with conversations with Water Resources and with Supervisor Crandall. We did not speak about Blue Ribbon Committee due to the Brown Act, but we did speak about the areas that needed the project to be covered.
Thank you. And for AlgeSonic, Green, and everyone else, this is a larger project with a larger number of buoys than was considered by Blue Ribbon Committee?
Yes, it's a larger scope.
Okay. And although you didn't discuss it in terms of Brown Act issues and all that, I don't recall, but when Blue Ribbon Committee took its vote on approved projects, some of them were straight-up recommendations to approve, some of them were recommended to approve with modifications. Do you happen to recall? Do you happen to recall, Supervisor Crandall, if LG Sonic, when the vote was taken, if there was a recommendation to make some modifications to the project?
I know that Sam was going to collect those modifications to bring forward with some of the votes. A lot of the comments made seemed to be more or less that we need to figure out how to spend county money on these projects, like we have cannabis funding, and I just remember those comments, really. So for me, it's a, sometimes it's an arduous process getting some of these projects to a consensus-driven approach, and so now we're voting on these, and it seems a little more competitive, whereas when we were doing things like hypo-limnetic oxygenation, there were no no votes, but so, and I think that's a result of last year, some of the, the whole program not being funded. And so now they're looking at different priority options, if that makes sense. So I don't know if I answered, but I do know that there seems to be a lot of pushback when it comes to Water Resources projects being proposed, and I would say ideally by UC Davis, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, I just want to highlight that AB 707, the legislation that created the Blue Ribbon Committee, does allow the committee to receive assistance and funding from public and private sources. So if there's some understanding, right or wrong, that Blue Ribbon Committee, the only thing that gets funded is through Natural Resources Agency or some other state agency, I don't think that's the way the committee is set up. But more importantly, I want to highlight that the Blue Ribbon Committee, again, as part of its fairly intensive vetting process, not only came back with several proposed modifications of the projects that were approved, but there was some concern at the May 25 meeting, the committee discussed the need for a third-party independent review of HAB proposals approved by the committee, and LG Sonic would have been one of those. The review is intended to provide important information on perceived efficacy of each proposal to the California Natural Resources Agency, the Governor's Office, and the Legislature as they seek funding for projects. Again, these projects were approved, so I assume the agency is going to continue to seek funding, but the committee suggested that there is a need for third-party independent review, just because there's a lot of different HAB projects out there, a lot of different technologies. I agree LG Sonic is promising, but it's not the only technology that was reviewed or approved by the committee, and I believe the deadline is still clicking on that. So committee members are being asked to review those considerations and questions as to the need for a third-party review panel and to provide responses to the committee by June 30 of this year. So, taken as a whole, I'm not oppositional to this, again, but we just went through a very rigorous review process for various projects that could benefit Clear Lake as a whole. This one's more localized where the algae is running. Other projects are aimed at other parts of the lake where we have sediment blockage and things like that. But we don't have an internal review process similar to that. For example, this has not been kicked official Wildlife Committee. Maybe that would be a good starting point for something like that. And I don't know that we necessarily need to invent or reinvent the wheel to have an internal review process that duplicates what we just spent a lot of time and energy at Blue Ribbon Committee to do. So it's, the other thing is, we're basically pitting Water Resources against Water Resources. I'm glad they're supportive of this and supporting Supervisors bringing it forward, but they probably also want funding for all the other projects that they sponsored and didn't get funding for. So I kind of want to talk about those two, if only because some of those projects might be more favorable to conditions in my district. So I don't have a county-led ranking criteria to analyze this project in context with all the other projects. I don't have a county review process that can allow us just to focus on what does our department want, what does Water Resources want? Because they want a lot of things, and they got a lot of projects approved, too. I think if I were to offer a friendly amendment, it would be to like, okay, let's look at these buckets of money, but it would be to probably get it back in the box that the Blue Ribbon Committee was suggesting, maybe look at a mechanism that we can route whatever funding we approve as kind of a starting point for Blue Ribbon Committee, and maybe we can reach out, for example, Clear Lake Arm, City of Clear Lake is here, property owners up in Clear Lake Oaks Arm. After these buoys go in and the initial term goes in there, I remember the original project, there's still ongoing maintenance, and I think it was 100K or something close to that per year for the smaller set of buoys that was in the Blue Ribbon Committee. So having, having just a little more of time to explore partnerships, additional funding sources that the state may have, additional partnerships that may be available locally may yield some fruit. And I know there's a need for speed, and I know we want to get algae addressed this year, but, you know, we've been at this for decades now trying to deal with this. So I think it's important to get it right. I certainly think it's important and prudent that we wait for the Blue Ribbon Committee to weigh in on whether a third-party review panel is needed to weigh various HAB proposals.
So in response to that, I met with Water Resources, and we had a couple different meetings with a couple different agencies that provide alternative feasibility projects for making the algae, or abating the algae in the area. From what I've gathered, I am not the one that said this is the thing we need. That was through the expertise of Water Resources saying this is the best bang for our buck here. Right now, I'm waiting, Supervisor Crandall is waiting, we're all waiting for, is the Blue Ribbon Committee going to get money? And with the state of California and the financial status that it's in, I can't keep waiting for someone else. If we have the ability to do something to help change the landscape for both enjoying our lake in a pleasurable way, to attracting more visitors, to enjoy, to stay in our area, to allow our businesses, how many businesses that are on the lake can't run a business when there's algae? It's just not possible. This is an opportunity to do something rather than waiting. I mentioned in the memo that I asked Director Deleon to collect for me everything that we've done for algae, and I think he went back to 1960 or something like that, and we've spent barely $500,000 to fix it, but in the last 10 years, we've had zero problems spending $2 million for the aquatic weeds. Why? Because it works, and we need to do it. I don't want to stop that. But we're not doing anything to solve the algae and waiting for a state-run Blue Ribbon Committee who has yet to provide the dollars to make this project happen. I can't keep waiting. And granted, today, we're not approving the project. We're approving the concept of the project, looking for the funding. Eventually, it's got to come back to us as a contract, as a fully-blown-out project that's very detailed in how it's going to function. Today, it's just, yes, we like the concept, let's move forward, see if ARPA can fund this, see if LATCF can fund it, see if other sources can fund it. If we find that, then eventually it comes back with a very detailed proposal and contract as to what that would look like. Today's not necessarily that day. It is a proposal on the table that is not the actual project that we would be signing onto. And for example, Sota Bay was brought up. If we're able to find the funds to add stuff in Sota Bay, I'm all for that. Let's make that happen. There's other areas that are dealing with this algae. If we can help, let's at least make the attempt to help. And right now, we are not making that attempt, and the people who are dealing with the burden are watching us do nothing.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and in regards to Blue Ribbon Committee, I think a lot of the skepticism, or folks with skepticism, would probably see this as a, as the county doing something, you know, as opposed to trying to bring it to Blue Ribbon Committee, because I know that that was consistently stated. So I know that there's consistent competition between projects. I at one time thought, let's go through Blue Ribbon Committee, but now I'm seeing it kind of morph into something different. I'm not downing the Blue Ribbon Committee, I just know that there's different projects and different initiatives that are competitive in nature and consistently say the same thing, well, the county should do their, should do their own work. They're supposed to be doing this anyhow. This gives them, this does that, and not saying that I want to do it because they said. I just, I feel like it's, it's something that we do as a proactive, you know, initiative. The other thing, my, my concept is more, I know that Supervisor Sabatier brought up economic development, but mine is also water quality, public health, because a lot of, a lot of people depend on the water from the lake to drink from, and sometimes there's boiling, you know, water boiling notices from public health and some of that. So that's, that's where I'm at with this, so.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah. No, I do, I do want to make sure, I know a couple statements were made both by Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Crandall, that the county needs to do something. So I know since I came on the board, you know, previous to the Blue Ribbon Committee and Cecilia Agar Curry's efforts to get it set up, you know, we are doing something. We are looking at long-term vision. So I understand you get comments like that, but also got to say, you know, we are taking steps forward. As I said, there are 14 projects, I think you said, that are being looked at, all looking at long-term funding. You want to make sure that things are happening. I clearly understand that, but we are doing something. We are looking at a long-term, because this is long-term. There is no, even in the memo, there is no magic bullet, how you fix these things. So it's a long-term strategy, and I want to make sure we're, you know, keeping that in mind. So when those comments are made of, yeah, you know, we can look at other projects from the county standpoint, but the creation of the Blue Ribbon Committee is to look at that long-term success here of the lake and the county and to get the right folks at the table. So I just, I just want to say that. We are doing something. You may hear comments one way or the other because you may not have a buoy setting in someone's backyard, but the long-term process to look at that. I think it's great to be innovative and to work with Water Resources from the county level to look at this. You know, if this was going to come back to the board or even today's conversation, where I'd see my support for this would be Congressmen Thompson's for the annual congressional community project funding that we have, a project that's up and ready to run, but I'd also like to look at it. It's been stated here a few different times about water quality, health of the folks that are drinking water from the lake, and I think we need to look at that if we're going to support this project, as that's what we'd be looking to try and do. The entire lake as a whole with all the drinking water, there are all the purveyors that we have pulling water out of the lake, that includes the county, that pulls water out of the lake, too, here in North Lakeport. So for me, that's where my support would come from. The algae issue and other things, now, I am not, I'm not a scientist, I didn't go to school for any of this, but let's just talk from a traditional and cultural standpoint. We have one of the oldest natural lakes here in North America. We have dammed it up so it cannot naturally treat itself the way it has done for about a million years. So we're reaping the rewards of that, man trying to create, control nature. And I must tell you, it's a very, it's a lot of heat in the lake, the water is very warm, the sediment comes to the top, and yes, it pushes, it's trying to clean itself out, but we've dammed it up. So it's pushing everything to the south where it's supposed to go and to leave the lake on a yearly basis or a bi-yearly basis when you have flooding, you have other things that are occurring to clean itself out. I'm not a scientist, I'm going to be in a lot of trouble for probably saying this, you don't understand, but coming from a cultural standpoint, I do understand. Mother Nature has been dammed up, we're going to, we're going to see those effects from it. I don't think there's going to be an easy solution to it, but from my standpoint, we have folks living around the lake, and I think we need to, my support would be for a drinking water solution for health and safety of the people around the lake. I know we have businesses, we want to support those, we're doing those with the aquatic weed abatement, but this will be something that'll be talked about long after Mok Simon sits on this diocese and looking at those long-term decisions. So in support of it, but from a drinking water quality standpoint all around the lake, instead of having it just in two areas. So that would be my thought, and the Congressman Thompson funding, I think this would be a project for that. And I think looking at those water quality issues for the drinking water would be where I could throw my support behind it. So those are my conversations there, and I, I know I've mentioned this many different times, I've been told, yeah, I understand why water, and I understand why it's dammed up. We've got to keep water for the Central Valley there, obviously later into the year for farming activities and other things, also because you have folks living along the river. I understand that, but I just want to talk about, you know, the oldest natural lake and mother, the way she needs to clean herself out, she's not able to do that naturally. So anyway, go ahead.
And just a quick response. The long-term is definitely always in mind. To me, Middle Creek Restoration is part of that long-term. Again, no silver bullet, even Middle Creek Restoration won't solve it, but it will help, and that is definitely something that I bring up every time. But the fact is, how long until some of those long-term solutions will take effect? I hope that we can get to the Middle Creek Restoration complete program within 10 years. That I think is hard to reach, but within those 10 years, what can we do to help mitigate some of the burdens that people have to persist with? So I do agree that long-term is not something we should give up on, and we are working on those things.
Supervisor Green?
Recently took a business trip to Eureka, an idea, side trip to the library in Arcata at Cal Poly-Humboldt, where the Congressional Archives of a former congressman by the name of Don Claussen keeps his papers, and he represented Lake County back in the, in the 70s. So I get the need that we got to do something, and back from the archives, there was a proposal then to aerate, I think, the Clear Lake Oaks Arm with bubblers that were going to bubble it, and there was debate even then about whether that might hurt the fishies. And then it was the Environmental Protection Agency that held all the funding keys, and they expressed concern and basically sent a rejection letter to a UC Berkeley researcher, so UC was involved even 50 years ago, and they got shot down, and low and behold, Congressman Claussen, two weeks later, turned around and issued a big old press release about a new aeration project that was going to benefit algae in Clear Lake because he found a different bucket of money involving economic development rather than EPA money. Now, I haven't found the end of that story. I assume that project actually went forward and was installed, but I have a pretty good inkling that project isn't functional today, 50 years later, because it didn't work. So I understand the need for action, but we've been at this 50-plus years now. What are we going to do about algae in Clear Lake, including on the eastern arms? So now that we have a more methodical, scientific approach to this, including a whole big old state committee and including a whole bunch of scientists pitching the projects, and now the suggestion that we need a third-party independent review so we can do some peer review of these various proposals, it's like we're doing a lot, you know? So I like the idea of committing some funding. I'd like it better if we were committing to supporting the Blue Ribbon Committee and its approval process, which Assembly Member Aguiar Curry worked really hard to bring us. And, you know, I'm not quibbling about where these buoys go. I think, you know, I'm going to defer to the experts. The greatest need is in those arms, you know, I got no quibble that those buoys aren't necessarily going to end up on the west side initially at least. But I, you know, we got to match the needs that are identified by these various groups and then prioritize. One thing that was surprising about Blue Ribbon Committee was that they approved all these projects, but then they acknowledged we had a backlog from last year, and then we didn't have a prioritization, we didn't have a ranking by Blue Ribbon Committee. Which of these projects are most important? Same thing again locally with the Water Resources. How do we decide this is the most important project we want to bring forward? One of the ones that they added this year and got approval for was dredging and boat ramp extension. That could go around the lake, equally important to tourism, if not more so. So, you know, if I can nudge the idea, it'd be like, I don't care the bucket of money. ARPA, Congressman Thompson earmark, whatever you want to do, but let's be supportive of the project that was approved by BRC versus carving our own way with a bigger set and no review process for efficacy. And I think we can satisfy both worlds really well if we try to get behind what was already approved, acknowledge that there may be some modifications coming down and maybe some peer review through this third-party panel, but support that process. And I think if we can get funding identified, the lion's share of it, if not all of it, then we can get moving this year. You know, I think that'd be super exciting, and I think the committee would be excited to hear that kind of local support. But I don't want to carve our own path necessarily. I want to support the path that has been laid down for us.
Yeah, and so, you know, I appreciate, you know, relying on the Blue Ribbon Committee, but I've seen how it's more from when I started on this committee to where we weren't really looking at no votes, we were not looking at being restricted to vote on our own projects, or, for example, as a county supervisor, if it's a Water Resources Department proposal, that there was no issue... that there was no issue voting for it back when UC Davis had a list of projects as long as theirs passed. And I've seen that with the Oxygen Nation Hypolympic Project. It was, let's hurry and get to that vote. And I know I'll probably get some beef about it, but last, last meeting was very disconcerting for me when we weren't allowed to vote on our own projects, whereas the year before we were. And then the year before, there was no no votes whatsoever. But now we're in a situation where there's no votes and then we're being told the county is supposed to be doing these projects anyhow and they're redundant projects. We're doing them too. So now it's basically, for me, I feel like UC Davis does their studies. They're looking to do studies. We've always had UC Davis conducting their work in our lake. There's been complaints before about UC Davis doing that work and not giving us that information. And so I, this is why, you know, I just feel like if we do something on our own, I know that once we bring, once Blue Ribbon Committee goes forward and looks at their, what did you call them Supervisor Green, their amendments and what is it, modifications? Our projects, I feel, get scrutinized really hard, but the others are kind of passed through. And, you know, I'm not trying to be negative about Blue Ribbon Committee, but I just have seen the difference in how it's progressed, in my opinion. So and I, I didn't think that at first and I, and I was told that, but I didn't believe it until this last meeting. So I have to say that.
So can you talk a little bit about the projects that have been funded through the Blue Ribbon Committee over the past couple of years?
So I want to say the docks, I know that that was a project that was put forward. The docks, I know that there was, I want to say the carp, but I don't even know if that's a county project.
Robinson.
Yeah, that was, that was different. Do you, is anyone from Water Resources want to give?
That is more than welcome to come on up here.
Help me with that.
I know this one. I know this one. Hi, I'm Angela DePamodao. I serve on the technical subcommittee for the Blue Ribbon Committee, has since it's been formed. So the current projects that Water Resources or the county has from the Blue Ribbon Committee, we have an outreach survey to determine perceptions and attitudes on water quality and impacts to the lake that is currently being in progress. We have the abatement of the structures, the dilapidated structures along the lake. That is also, we had county funds for that. The cannabis tax revenue funds went to match that and then Blue Ribbon Committee supported that project with that match in mind. We also have some stormwater funding. So this is really interesting. We got awarded a $1.6 million Stormwater Planning Implementation Project. That was in 2021. And actually, we're still waiting for half of those funds to come in. So we haven't received those yet. But the other half are for the illicit discharge detection, which is spill response. There's spills on the lake and trash cleanup. So there was a trash cleanup this weekend at La Cern. And all that was funded by the Blue Ribbon Committee funds. And we also have the lake sampling. So the monthly sampling that goes on in Clear Lake, you know, that sampling traditionally was conducted by DWR since 1960s. And they stopped all of a sudden in 2020. And so we wanted to pick that up so we could keep collecting that data because it's important for us to notice changes in the lake over time. And we're only able to do that with that information. So the Blue Ribbon Committee was able to provide funding for that stopgap for that project. We asked for that funding again and they're, don't really know if they want to keep funding that project. We need to find additional funding to sustain that program also. I think that's about it for those projects. But we've gotten around $2 million from Blue Ribbon Committee for various projects. We recently were approved some primrose removal, tulip planting funds for about $156,000. And we also got approved for Natural Shoreline Stewards Program and then also a lake management plan program and dredging of the mouths and the boat ramp, stream mouths and the boat ramps. Those were all approved projects that don't have funding yet allocated, but it is the goal of the Blue Ribbon Committee to help find us funding for that or put them in as line items in the governor's budget whenever there's money available in that budget. I think that's about it. Does that answer? I think we're, okay.
Yeah, that helps. Yeah. And just to kind of give more emphasis as to the situation with voting and it, the initiative that are, initiatives that are brought forward, it tends to have a lot more scrutiny on the county. And I've said this before, for our Water Resources projects. And now that we're having these, you know, different, I guess you could say priorities, it seems as if the collective group of the Blue Ribbon Committee is kind of like saying, well, the county has, you know, they have their own department. They should be doing these own things. And so we're being a little more scrutinized, if that makes sense. And so when it comes to prioritization and the budget not getting passed last year and projects being emphasized. And so, so I, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but I'm just like, from here forward, now that we're prioritizing, it's looking like some of our projects are going to be put lower on the totem pole because these other proposals are looking to have their projects more preferred, if that makes any sense.
Okay. Okay. So I'll open it up to the public. Do we have anybody in the chambers that wishes to speak on this? Come on up.
Joan Mas.
That was perfect.
I was Eddie Lem in 1988 when the Superfund site came to Clear Lake. I want to know why we haven't talked about the Superfund. Has that been canceled? I haven't heard that it was canceled. And I think that-
It's a different topic?
No. It, the Superfund site is concerning methylmercury, cyanobacteria, algae.
Joan, there actually was, there was a, they gave a presentation, I want to say about a month ago, about the progress and how it's moving forward. So I-
Well, I don't think that you can make any decisions without talking to everybody involved. Okay? That includes the federal EPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again. Okay. Angela DePamodao from Lake County Water Resources. Just a clarification for the technology because I've had questions about this before. So the buoys will target cyanobacteria and cyanobacteria have little cells or mechanisms in them that create buoyancy. And so that's what the sonic, that's what the, is actually targeting is the buoyancy, the little cells with air inside the cyanobacteria as opposed to algae or green algae, which is phytoplankton, which is fish food. So we just want to clarify that we're not targeting to get rid of fish food, phytoplankton. It's targeting get rid of cyanobacteria. And a lot of the strategic areas where those buoys are placed in your, your map was when you look at the cyanotoxin monitoring, particularly that Big Valley Rancheria has been doing. Every year, those areas have repeated signages for danger. And I don't know if Sarah Ryan was invited today, but I know her data, she has put that together for where all the danger levels or warning levels, which are the highest trigger levels based on cyanotoxins per the State Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. And those areas repeatedly get those, those concentration triggers as opposed to the upper arm, which does sometimes get those triggers, but it's not as much, it's not as repeated. So there is overlap between where those buoys are going to be placed and actual data from the cyanotoxin monitoring. And so that might be some important information that could be requested from Big Valley that does that monitoring to kind of make sure those buoys are going in the right place to where those results from the cyanotoxin monitoring is actually occurring. Just a point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Quick question, as long as you're here, and it could be for you or William. Since I don't have a breakdown, can you clarify, I surmise that the proposal before us today has grown in scope from what Blue Ribbon Committee approved. Is there a real quick breakdown? Is it 20 buoys versus 14? Or, you know, I assume that we have problem spots so that either what's before us today or the lesser project approved by BRC would still be helpful. So can you just help us compare and contrast what's before us today and what was previously approved?
I think it's complementary projects. Part of the placement suggested for the Blue Ribbon Committee project was because we were explicitly told not to have buoys placed in certain areas because there was going to be research going on and they didn't want to mess up the research. I'm sorry if I'm being honest and blunt, but what we really care about is improving the lake for the residents here. And if there can be research that can go on coincidentally with that, that would be the goal. But the plan that was proposed to the Blue Ribbon Committee with the buoys was structured that way because we were told it wouldn't get approved otherwise because it would interfere with other areas where there's ongoing research.
Who's research?
UC Davis.
UC Davis. Also, lower arm, there was a project proposed for the AECOM, which is the harvesting, the algae harvesting. So, which hasn't been, it was approved, but hasn't been funded yet. So does that answer your question Supervisor Green?
Thank you.
Chair of the Piceau Board members, thank you for the discussion. This is, I'm Alan Flora, City Manager, City of Clear Lake. You know, I think this is, this discussion's really a long time coming. I mean, I know there was a lot of efforts and discussion about this a number of years ago when I was with the county, but, you know, we just haven't made as much progress on sort of these long-term solutions as, as would be ideal. You know, I was, I think, I'm pleased with what the Blue Ribbon Committee has done in the sense that there's been a lot of research effort and a lot of, I think, somewhat feasible solutions that have come out of this. And, you know, I don't regularly attend those meetings, but because of what Angela was saying, a lot of the impacts being in the lower arm and really impacting Clear Lake, whenever folks want to talk about doing something on Clear Lake related to harmful algae blooms, they usually come and talk to us because, you know, we're the most impacted area generally. Austin Beach is the place every year that is generally the first one that we have to put up a danger sign because of the testing. So, but, so I'm aware of kind of three proposed technologies related to harmful algae blooms that came out of the Blue Ribbon Committee. There could be more that I'm not aware of. One was sort of the aeration system in kind of like the Clear Lake Keys area. The city installed along Austin Beach this year, a similar type of technology to try and see if we can create a swimmable area for the community throughout the year. And so we're hoping that through testing and whatnot, that we'll be able to see how effective this is. But of course, that only works in a very contained area. And the feasibility of doing a system like that, that would impact the entire lake is very difficult to put together. The other project, of course, is the LG Sonic Technology, which because it's somewhat modular, you know, has a lot of attractiveness to it. The other one being the AECOM project, which was proposed to be tested at Red Bud Park in Clear Lake. And so it's essentially a, sort of a large trailer setup that they come in, they stick a hose in the lake, they pull water out, they separate the algae out of it, or the cyanobacteria, and then they put the clean water back in the lake. It's a technology that's been used a lot in Florida. A lot of this technology, I think LG Sonic as well, has been tested in Florida. They have a lot of problems down there. So this isn't really a new thing. It just hasn't been experienced here yet. But the problem with AECOM is, if I could just have a-
Yeah. So I have a question for you with-
Okay.
Time is up. Is this a project that the city would partner with the county on?
Well, I'd love to be able to put some money forward for this. I actually talked to LG Sonic after being exposed to the technology about doing a small thing. And we can't afford to put a million and a half dollars towards this. But one of the gentlemen that you'll hear from has a hotel on the lake that, you know, he has to cancel reservations when, when the blooms are bad. And so my hope was maybe we try a little project in that type of area there that might help and see how it works for a year and then maybe it could be expanded later. And maybe LG Sonic or William or someone wanted to speak to this, but they are not optimistic about a very small-scale thing like that being effective. And they think that we need to do something larger to control the whole arm. And so that's the problem for us getting involved. And, you know, I don't want to be too direct, but you know, the City of Lakeport isn't putting any money in the weed mitigation project, which benefits this side of the lake. And, you know, it's been pretty simple to get that done over the years. And so my hope would be that we could cut through some of the red tape, identify some funding and try this out. So.
So that's a yes, possibly.
Possibly.
Possibly. Okay.
Do the cities receive ARPA as well and whatnot, this type of funding?
Do you receive ARPA funds? Are they already spent?
Yes, those are committed for a few infrastructure projects at this time. Yeah. But we did receive ARPA funds, about $3 million.
All right, thanks. But if we did an earmark request, then it could be a collaborative request with the county and both cities.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problem with that. The only thing I don't like about it is, is timing, you know? I was very optimistic probably eight months ago in the conversation with the Blue Ribbon Committee about, you know, they really like some of these projects. They wanted to try out the AECOM project, see how that worked. But, you know, that's 1.3 million for a three-month pilot project, extremely expensive. And, you know, just with the state budget, they pulled everything back. And so here we are, another year, and, you know, our folks aren't going to want to use our parks and our restaurants and hotels are going to be impacted. I mean, you know, so all of us are hopeful that this year isn't going to be as bad because of the water level. But I don't know if any of you have been keeping an eye on the state water board's harmful algae bloom satellite technology that's available now. I just became aware of it recently. I don't know how long it's been out there, but in the last 10 days, there has been an enormous change in the lake as far as the amount of what they analyze for harmful algae blooms in Clear Lake. And so, you know, I'm very concerned that, you know, we're going to have a big problem that's going to impact our economy again. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy Ruzika, I'm a resident of North Lakeport. I'm hearing that these buoys are going to last 15 years. If at your home you have a swimming pool or you're affiliated with a business, does your pool sweep last 15 years? What about a five-year project? And what about being able to move them? I have a hard time that it has to be anchored in one position for 15 years? Am I following correctly? And I'm getting a little old and don't follow it as well as I used to. But I'm for anything that's going to improve our tourism and our quality of life and our water quality for drinking purposes. But 15 years seems kind of far-fetched, too long a commitment as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
If I may clarify?
Sure.
The payment for the devices are upfront. It's not a $1.5 million per year for the equipment. If we do data gathering, then there would be an annual fee to ensure that we continuously get the wireless connection for the devices. But the devices themselves are stated to last, kind of like solar panels, you have a 25-year potential for them to last. This one has a 15-year potential to last. It's not that we're getting into a contract that for 15 years, we're going to be paying them for these devices.
Good morning. I'm Keith A. Hart, Golden State Water Company, Operations Superintendent in Clear Lake. I'm also an alternate to Scott Harder on the Blue Ribbon Committee. So I've heard all of these technologies, all the presentations. There's a number of them out there. I think bang for the buck. This is a good approach. And as it was already stated, they're modular. You can move them. You can attach more to the master buoys. The, I think the approach would be good until we learn how to control the phosphorus and nitrate in the lake. It's, we all, we all thought it was coming from runoff. And a certain amount of it is, but a lot of it's come from the lake bed as well. So until we learn how to control nature, this is a method to do that in a smaller place. I mean, it's naturally occurring. It's there. So until that's, we're trying to control that. And I think this is a way to do it until something else happens. I also think that there's an opportunity for partnerships with other water companies around the lake, other resorts, et cetera, to employ this technology as well. We, at Golden State Water Company, my boss, myself, our water quality engineer, sat through a presentation from LG as well, on our own, to, to look at that technology. So- to look at that technology. So, if the four slave buoys can report to one master buoy. So, there's an opportunity for us to put a slave buoy and have, you know, someone else have a smaller cost and have a slave talk to it. So, I support the, this technology and at least looking for the funding to move forward.
Thank you.
I have a handout that I'd like to go to the board. All right, I understand I have three minutes.
Yes, can you state your name, please?
Yes. Okay. I'm Bob Vanderwood. I'm General Manager of Clear Lake cottages in Marina, part of Cathedral Hill Associates. We own two large Double Trees, Seattle, Dallas, a Holiday Inn. Each of these has like 200 to, you know, 290 rooms in them. We're a small operation, had the intent of expanding here at the lake, but we are having financial revenue problems. I have a couple of pictures. I'm personalizing this in a couple of ways, myself, and then the, and my employees, and the impact on the guests, and our business. I understand there's a camera showing, but these are pictures. We have a boating operation, pontoon boats, wave runners, et cetera. I go out and check the lake, see what's going on. My eyes started stinging. This was a couple of years ago. And I golf, sometimes my eyes sting. I knew this was totally different than what I'd seen before. After going to Santa Rosa and getting shots, this is the impact of the cyanobacteria. Without touching it, it was driving past it, observing. This is my face the third day. This has happened three to four times. I was kind of the poster boy, working with Dr. Pace. And there's some funding going to, trying to get funding from the state to look into cyanobacteria. I don't know where it ended up. This is my resort. This is last year. This is our boating operation. We can't even get the boats, much less the water level, the toxins. We've had fans. We put fans in the water, $500, $700 a fan. We rotate them around, pushing the water on our property. Well, that's a year or so ago, and we're talking, someone recently mentioned, oh, look at what's going on now. Well, this is the view from one of my lakefront cottages. Looks fairly pristine, until you take a little closer look. So, the algae is already appearing this year. So, what's the effects? I had blisters on my eyeballs, swollen face, itching, respiratory problems, headaches. My employees as well, my guests. We've had guests yell at us. We've had guests leave. We've lost thousands and thousands, if not tens of thousands, if you look at the people who haven't booked with us. We've had people got diarrhea, other things. We've had to give a lot of money back. We've lost, our revenues are way down in the last several years to tune, 100,000 plus. So, what are, what are we doing? We tried the fans. We, we had people talk about how they're promoting the lake. We're being very careful for not getting sued. So, I have links on my website to the POMO data.
So...
I have 251 on mine, but we have links on our website.
I'll give you five more seconds.
We have handouts in our cottages. People call. I tell them the truth. And now, my company is really concerned about our expansion we were going to do here.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Do we have anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we have a couple of hands up in the Zoom room. First, we have Betsy Khan. If you want to state your name, you know, I have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board. Betsy Khan, Lake County resident. I have been involved in the Clean Water Program in the, in the County of Lake since 2000, preceding the water quality orders from the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board, and the findings of Tetra Tech, and so forth. The state of California has studied this lake since the 1950s. All of the history and all the scientific reports that you have funded already are present on the new website for the Department of Water Resources, which is just beautiful. Everything can be accessed by the public. But there's no question that this subject affects everything in the county. It affects health and safety, the overall economy, the tourism, your compliance with NPDES, federal EPA water quality orders. And I have been paying attention to what the Blue Ribbon Committee has been doing. The main reason why these approved projects have not been funded is simply because of the state budget, and they were not able to get those projects into the may revise by the governor. Anything that you can do, and I think that you should really listen to your other people that talk to you, especially Mr. A. Hart and Mr. Vanderwood. This is an ongoing plague on our houses, and so I would really encourage you to take a leap of faith and give this a chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Frank Kostner.
Hi, this is, my name is Frank Kostner. I'm the General Manager of Canockdike County Water District in the City of Clear Lake. And we are severely impacted by the algae blooms. In fact, we've, we've probably spent, you know, over $100,000 over the past two years in additional chemical costs, overtime, and everything else to try to treat the algae in the lake. The algae is so bad that, in fact, I can smell it from my house. And I live about three miles from the lakeshore, and I can smell it from my house. You know, there's been a lot of studies and a lot of proposals over the past 20 years that I've been a part of. And it seems to me like there's, there's lots of money for studies, and there, we study it, and we study it, and we gather all this data, but we don't seem to actually do anything to actually physically treat the water. And so, I am, I am really encouraging you to actually fund a project that we can actually get some results from. And, you know, just triage a patient, you know, you, you need to treat the most, the critical areas. You know, you, you don't want to wait until you can treat the whole person. You really, you know, if you, if you have a, you know, if you have a wound or whatever, you know, you need to treat the wound. And, and the lake is hurting, there's areas that we can focus on. And then maybe we can use that data to, to, you know, the results, some actual results, to use around the lake. But I would really encourage, however, whatever means necessary, whatever means that we have available, is that we can actually do something, some actual physical action to help treat the water. You know, we did water, we do water sanitary surveys, and we come up with proposals, and it doesn't seem like they go anywhere. So, it would be really encouraging to me as a water manager, for public safety and public health. This is a public health issue, you know? It's, it's not just aesthetics. It's, it's not just how it looks. It actually, it's very harmful. It's a water quality issue, and that we should take our public health, safety. You know, over the, I've been in the business for 34 years, and I've just seen the lake get worse and worse and worse. And, and the chemical costs, labor costs, and the water treatment issues continue. You know, we have some of the most sophisticated and expensive water treatment plants in the, in the, in the state. And, and we also have some of the most disadvantaged communities in the, in the state. And so, it's, it's really hard to ask for these, for our customers to pay for the extra expense because the lake is so bad, and because the algae blooms are unabated.
Okay, I think we are at three minutes now.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? I'm not seeing any new hands up in Zoom. And anyone else in the chambers? Last chance. Okay, then we'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
Appreciate all the comments that were made and the conversation here at the dais as well. Again, this is simply a proposal. It's not a final project. I'm willing to be flexible to make sure that we maximize what can be done to help the most amount of people. I want to be utilitarian about this. The greatest happiness for the greatest number of people, or else if we're only helping a few, this is not worth it. And I, I don't mind reviewing the project's scope, reviewing the exact placement. But I still would like to move forward in ensuring that we are looking at the data as to what is the most impacted areas, where are our water purveyors, and so on and so forth, and see if there's funding available to us, and then come back with the final project.
So, given that we're in June, is, is it even feasible, if everything moved quickly, to have this up for this season?
I, I am past my disappointment that I wasn't able to bring this to you guys in January. This was something that we started back in August, I think, the conversation, when we were knee-deep in the drought and elbow-deep in algae, that I did not want to see that happen again without taking some actions. So, my assumption is, I, number one, I don't think it's possible to get everything installed and see its impact. And I also don't want to install it when it's already turned, and we're going to say, oh, we failed, because we're not seeing the, the actual cleaning of the lake with this equipment. I want to make sure it's installed before the lake turns. We know the lake is turning. I hate to see it turn without us taking action, but I also don't want to rush it and put us in a situation where it looks like we just spent 1.5 million and getting nothing out of it. I want to make sure we do it right. But ensuring we have the funding, worst-case scenario, we get a plan, and we wait for the next earmarks. I hope that's not the avenue we have to take. But that's why I put all the options available to us, rather than trying to ramrod it through on one specific pathway. And I don't know if Supervisor Crandall has any more to add to that?
No, I don't.
Well, I would like to see it come back. And I would like to see if we can maybe have a partnership with the City of Clear Lake, or if there's any other partners I would like to collaborate on this. I, I'm not sure yet which funding is best, but there are several options. And I would like it to be continued to work on and brought back, and hopefully for next season. It just doesn't seem like it'll be feasible for this season. And did you have something to add, Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, just, just thinking about it. Michael, I know you've talked quite a bit about the project that was approved by the Blue Ribbon Committee, and you said this one is a little bit larger. Do you, can anyone in the room talk about what size that project was, and the starting process, and where we're at now? So...
Angela?
Is Will, it was Will's project.
Is Mr. Fox still on?
Yeah.
Because I thought that was a good point made by Michael, that we support the project, and, you know, as it comes back, maybe that's the project we say, all right, hey, all right, you don't have the funding, but the county can step up and, you know, do that initial one that was submitted. I know, not happy with it. I clearly understand that needs to be in a bigger case, but, you know, maybe we can start there. Also, a point was made too by the last Public Speaker, you know, triage and a patient, starting where it's coming from. And I know, just for being here, looking, you know, multiple conversations with different scientists from UC Davis, former Jim Steele, sitting down and talking about it. We know that, you know, it doesn't all start on the north side, but a lot of the north stuff is pushed down by the winds, and it moves, and it collects at the south end, on Clear Lake, and, you know, in the Keys and everything from there. So, really making sure we're looking at that, of treating it from, you know, where it's coming from and being pushed to. Because, yeah, it's great to treat where it's gathering, but as you said, as you try and treat an illness, you want to get ahead of it, you know, being proactive. So, that's why I like the entire all-around-the-lake conversation as the Blue Ribbon continues to have. So, I, I did say, you know, I think this is a project that's been brought to us that I could support. Like I said, I think this would be a great one for Congressman Thompson's funding. The board decides different. You know, action definitely is needed. We know stuff is happening. But it all kind of is, oh, our technology's going to work. Well, until we do the project, we won't know it's going to work, just as Michael Green said, Supervisor Green said. Some stuff was done back in the 50s. I hadn't heard about any of that, so, just coming up. So, do have support for the overall concept, where the funding comes from, you know, like C. But ultimately, partnerships with both cities, I think needs to be continued conversation as we're doing this, because we all either, you know, we all benefit from the lake and the health of the lake. It is the most important asset we have here, besides our constituents. So, continuing along the process, I'd like to see it come back to in some iteration. And it may just be the Blue Ribbon Committee project. So, those are my thoughts.
As a request, there's an outline of possible avenues. I'd still love to see this, go to the ARPA to see what they say. Love to see, go through the process. Is it possible to use LACTF? And again, the project's scope in itself, that can be a different conversation, rather than the funding conversation, where Water Resources can continue to speak with Blue Zone, Blue Zones, too many Blues, Blue Ribbon Committee, and figuring out what is the best scope for the project in order to marry the project with the funding availability.
So, I would agree with the ARPA funding, because I think that's a conversation we could have with both cities. Everybody got some ARPA funding. So, looking at those long-term solutions, I would agree with that ARPA conversation, going back to the committee. I know we're going to have budget conversations, and we've got some grants, some other things. Money has been reallocated back that we had set aside. So, I think, yeah, there are some opportunities there. So, I would agree with the ARPA committee looking at this again for sure.
So...
In conversation with the, the cities also.
Right. Okay, so ARPA committee, and then direct staff to continue to work on the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. And then conversations with both cities, after the ARPA committee talks about it, or... I guess we can get to that. Supervisor Green?
Absolutely, ARPA, absolutely, LACTF. I do want to, you know, as we're sending them out, I would like us to stay in the four corners of the approved Blue Ribbon Committee project. If only because it's smaller, it's not going to ruffle any feathers of other projects still out there that could be impacted by the larger-scale project. And I also think keeping a smaller project, a smaller ask initially, maybe we can't do the full deployment this year. But I still hold out some slim hope that a phased implementation of this project could be done if, if we figure out the funding quickly. So, if we can bootstrap some local contribution and get some pilot deployment going, it is important, I think, to get the city involved, but even more important to get the state involved. And if we're going to have any luck getting any type of money out of the state, following the path of the Blue Ribbon Committee versus going our own, I think is probably more suited to get that state buy-in.
Yeah, my only concern with staying, as you said, within the four corners of the Blue Ribbon Committee, is that we've heard that there's areas that want to be designated for research, and those are our vulnerable people that live there. And so, I wouldn't want them excluded just because of research that's been ongoing. And so, I would really encourage our staff to bring back a report on the difference between those projects, and how we can better support the health and safety of our residents. Supervisor?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that I made that, I know we talked about how the initiative for AB 707, Blue Ribbon Committee, was put in place for the health of the lake. I had to mention that again last meeting, because to me, it started feeling like it's more of a vibe for project funding, rather than the health of...
For research funding?
Yeah, well, either or, you know? And then so, because, you know, and I already stated the reasons before. So, you know, and then it's been said also that short-term projects for research are funded with just as expensive. I know that, and feel that if we were to bring something like this to them, it would be heavily scrutinized. And I'm not sure how it's going to work out with the other project with LG Sonic, but once it moves forward, it'll move forward. But I just, I had to state that because I know it was mentioned about, you know, AB 707. I do feel the intent there. I just see, for me, this is what I'm gathering at these meetings. So, it's not to take it away from anything anyone's saying. I respect what we're talking about and the stances, and I do agree with the consensus of the board. So...
And just my final thing. I did look for grant funding. We worked on that. We were hoping to utilize the drought relief funds to say that our water purveyors were struggling and needed help. We got denied for that. That wasn't available for us. So, we've tried other options to find funding throughout the course of the conversations that we've had. And while I don't, I don't want to prohibit a conversation with the cities, I just want to remind everybody that whether you're in a city or unincorporated, we're all paying into the watershed protection district, no matter where your property is, because the lake is the jurisdiction of the county to handle. So, again, I don't mind having those conversations, but I just want to make sure and make that statement.
And it is something that we could discuss at the... And it is something that we could discuss at the Risk Credit, Risk Credit, the RRA.
RRA, yeah.
Because we do have, our membership there is inclusive of both cities and water purveyors and this is a safety issue. And maybe there is some way that the RRA could be supportive in other ways that we haven't maybe figured out at this moment.
Yep.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I, I do want, you know, obviously Congressman Thompson's funding, I've said that too, if we could, you know, think it through the process, you know, of, of funding opportunities, the ARPA funding, you know, definitely is coming to the top for me as we had the longer conversation today because I don't want to forget, we've got a 10-year road plan, which we know that we have a 200, I'll say it wrong, probably $224 million deficit. So, we, we want to be strategic with those opportunities when we have those. So, yeah, I think moving towards the ARPA conversation for funding most likely is, you know, where I fully support something like this. So, Scott, you're sitting here in the room. We all know that's a heavy lift for the road, so, sorry to get off on that. It's all economic development, but that one, I'm really stuck on how we, how we do that. That's a lot more than 1.5 million, so, obviously, thank you.
Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources, and, and I appreciate their recognition and, and the comment. And I, I just, I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I think I'd need to, yes, every property in Lake County and in the incorporated cities contribute to the watershed protection district and our funding annually from those tax contributions is about $700,000 a year. So, and that goes to the operation of the entire watershed protection district. So, I, I can, I can almost feel the folks watching this saying, well, you know, I'm already paying into this program, I'm paying into the watershed protection district, where's my money going? Well, hopefully that kind of puts things in perspective. It's, it's...
It's not enough.
It's not half of this, this project's proposal, so, and that, and that goes towards the operation of the entire district. So, just, just a general comment to give some perspective of scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and I just want to support Supervisor Crandall. I, I did find some of the Blue Ribbon Committee process interesting, but mildly. But, but I also think we need to work, not within the four corners, but support that process and also figure out those issues. The conflict of interest thing was interesting, the idea of a third-party peer review panel interesting, but I think we need to grow that capacity within the committee. So, again, they never rank these things and it's interesting that the legislation and the charter and all that, you know, what is the health of a lake? Well, it depends on who you're asking. Are we talking about Clear Lake Hitch? We haven't heard one word about that and how beneficial this project is or is not. And when we have those discussions, well, like, all these projects benefit the lake generally, but then we make them, one thing the committee added is like, well, tell us how this is going to benefit Lake County's economy. And it's like, and they're all making stuff up as they go because it's very hard to quantify. In this project at least, we have a much easier task quantifying what some of the economic impacts might be and, and that is core to the central legislation. But the larger issue of what's a healthy lake look like and how do we rank these projects based on actual environmental benefit versus economic benefit? I think that's something that the original legislation didn't necessarily fully get done. I think the committee can move toward understanding that better. I think we can move toward understanding that better too. I clearly support this idea because it is going to be beneficial on multiple fronts, including economic. Is it going to benefit the hitch recovery that we're all about right now? No, stream dredging is probably going to be much more cost-effective and much more hitch beneficial in that lens. So, I always want to have a broad lens as we're talking in this. I do appreciate the Blue Ribbon Committee was a bit of a lift, but they're following the original charter and the original legislation that probably focused more on economic stuff than other things, so.
Okay, so, we've got direction to staff and we've got direction to the ARPA committee.
One, one last comment.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall, our appointees on the Blue Ribbon Committee, reaching out to say, "Yeah, Gar Curry, if you have concerns or conversations," I just, I would recommend that.
Yeah.
You know, to reach out to the author. You know, she's always open, always available for conversation, supportive of Lake County, even with the, you know, the initiation of this Blue Ribbon Committee, so, Blue Ribbon Committee, so, I just put that suggestion out there to reach out to our representative. Very open to having conversations here about Lake County's future.
And I'll just, yeah, I will do that.
Talking to the committee member.
No, you're right. It, it, it will, it will help. I just like, you know, I, last year, when, when we talked about the hypolimnetic oxygenation project, there was concern from most of the committee members that were saying, oh, we, are we prioritizing because we want to make sure? I mean, because we're peer reviewing and, and the chair during the time said, no, there's no, no, there isn't a situation like that. We, you know, we plan to put these on the list and when the funding comes available, well, there's no limit. There's no, there's none of that. And so, they were looking at doing that last year and then now, here we are. You see what I'm saying? There's a little bit of a, you know, contradictory, you know, thing, double standard type of thing going and, and I, and I'm not upset or, I'm just a little miffed that it's, you know, at one time, it was stated that this wasn't the case and now here we are. And so, so, I mean, I think we'll get to a better path and I don't want to discourage working with the, the Blue Ribbon Committee and I will reach out to our Assemblywoman, so, yeah.
If I can be clear on the direction, first step is sending it to ARPA, seeing what's going on. If it's denied there, we look at possibly LACTF and that conversation of how those funds will be utilized because we have not had that conversation about LACTF yet. And then, at the very worst case scenario, while staff continues to develop the project, it's a project that may be one of the projects we submit to our congressional community projects in the long run.
Yeah, but I mean, we could get partial funding from ARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I think that's the first step of a conversation.
I just wanted to...
We'll start with ARPA.
Can we do concurrent?
You're for, could you do a double referral? I mean, ARPA and LACTF? I mean, again, need for speed, maybe we can't deploy anything this year, but...
I think we'll start with ARPA because that committee is put together. We haven't talked about the...
Yeah, and I think one at a time is perfectly fine.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, let's take a five-minute break. We will come back at six-minute break, 11:45. Eleven o'clock item, 6.8, sitting as the Board of Directors, Lake County Watershed Protection District, presentation of the Clear Lake Integrated Aquatic Plant Management Program, Water Resources.
Thank you so much, Board, for having me today. Angela de Palma Dow, I'm the Vasis Species Program Coordinator for Water Resources. I manage the Clear Lake Aquatic Plant Management Program and this, I've never done a presentation with the Board since I got here in 2018, so, today is my annual report about this program. And Jordan is my coworker and she's going to be manning the slides for me, so thanks, Jordan. Next slide, please. Okay, so, the, today, the presentation is going to be introduction about the Aquatic Plant Management or APM program. We're going to look at briefly ecology, purpose, the revenues and costs for this program. This presentation is not going to be talking about cyanobacteria algae, which we just had a nice, great conversation about. And to remind you guys and the public, we did present about the cyanobacteria in July 2021 with public health and the tribes that do the monitoring and we also provided an update in April 2022. And then, a reminder about this program is we do not manage the airboats or the Hydrola program. That is the California Department of Food and Agriculture. So, if you see those airboats out there, that's not county, that's actually the state, but we do have a fact sheet on our website if you have questions about Hydrola and we also have some in the board chambers today. So, this program is really important. We talked about economy a lot earlier and this is from the Lake County Certified Tourism Ambassador, CTA. I became one this Saturday. So, there's 3.7 million tax receipts that provide over 1,700 jobs to the county and there's a strong alliance on lake use and lake view. So, if you look at all the marketing, what's common, there's lake views, lake use in all of the economic marketing that we have in our county. Next slide. And the county relies specifically on 1.3 million for fishing dollars alone. However, aquatic plant habitat is important for fishing habitat and fish habitat. Nobody can boat or fish in conditions like this. So, this program is important so we can manage these kinds of conditions. Next slide. And also, this is the number one topic people call and talk to me about. And I'm glad I included the cyanobacteria in here so you guys can see. People call me, whether they live here, they're visiting, they're looking for rental or coming up to purchase a property, they call and they ask me questions about the aquatic plants, number one, and cyanobacteria and quagga mussels are number two. And so, last year, it was about 22% of my calls were based for aquatic plants. So, the purpose of this program is to comply with our ordinance, so Chapter 26 of the ordinance, to ensure that aquatic weeds don't interfere with prevent commerce navigation, fishery, recreation. So, it's basically so we can safely manage the lake, provide access for residents against nuisance and invasive plants. We also know that aquatic plants can have damaged infrastructure, particularly drinking water systems, they can clog the intakes. Any of the channels and coves, if they get clogged up with aquatic plants, can be navigation hazards. So, the way that we do that is we have county-sponsored treatments and thank you guys for approving the contract today with Clean Lakes. And so, we target high-use recreation areas during June and August. We also issue private permits for herbicide or manual removal at private properties along the lake and these can occur anywhere between May and November. So, in order for us to manage, we have to understand the ecology of aquatic plants. So, aquatic plants, a diverse community like this provides a valuable service to the lake, particularly, next slide. They provide shoreline stabilization. So, a nice rich plant bed prevents erosion, stabilizes that shorelines, prevent property loss. They're really good at cycling nutrients, so they actually compete with algae and cyanobacteria by taking in phosphorus and other nutrients. And they do photosynthesize, they produce oxygen, which is important because we all breathe oxygen and also in the water for fish and other habitat, needs for insects and wildlife within our lake. And here's a picture to really kind of show, next slide, how these plants can prevent erosion and provide shoreline stabilization. So, we have high wave energy and that can come from winds or boating and the plants kind of break down that energy into low wave energy, so you're not getting that scour or removal of, of property and scouring out of sediments, which then can go into the lake and feed algae blooms and cyanobacteria. They're also very important for wildlife. So, you guys, if you're birders, you like grebes, the grebes eat and they use the Sago pond weed, which I have in one of these jars here for you guys to look at, as nesting. And so, it's really important for wildlife here for aquatic plants. However, some plants are considered a nuisance or they actually are labeled invasive. In 2010, we had a survey, we have about 44 different aquatic plants in our lake, but these are the five that are the most concerned. Eurasian milfoil is on this list, but it's grayed. This is a big one, a big invasive, but because of our lakes, floods and droughts, we actually haven't seen this in the last few years. So, we're really luck, lucked out that we don't have that as one of our main plants of concern. And these are the plant species, go next slide, next slide, next slide. This is a definition of aquatic invasive species, can cause invasive, environmental harm, public health harm. Next slide, please. And these are the ones that we have right here. So, in the jars, we have on display the Sago pond weed, which is up at the top left, is a nuisance even though it is a native species. The invasive curly leaf pond weed is here on the top right and you have that in the jar. That is invasive, it's not native here, it can get really big, it gets stuck in the props, boat props. Then we have azola, so this one floats on the surface, it's very small, it's, it is native, but it gets really thick and kind of makes it look like it's solid ground. And then, we of course have the invasive creeping water primrose. So, creeping water primrose is a health hazard. You guys can see how thick it gets. It actually harbors West Nile virus mosquitoes and we've worked with vector control and they've identified that there's more West Nile mosquitoes coming from areas with heavy creeping water primros than areas where there's not. So, how do they spread? Fragments, they can reproduce by seed, but very, very rarely. In fact, they like to use the fragment. So, that jar that's going around with the green lid is about a two-to-three inch fragment in there. And so, a two-inch, three-inch fragment can grow up to four inches a day. So, if you look at this picture here on the right, imagine a boat driving through there and cutting up and making about 2,000 fragments and then each of those 2,000 fragments can grow up to four inches a day. And then you have more boats going through there, you can imagine how quickly we can see aquatic plant populations can just skyrocket. So, we talked about a little bit earlier about how stuff comes from the upper part of the lake down to the lower arms of the lake. So, this was actually a study conducted by UC Davis as part of their funds for the Blue Ribbon Committee and they put in these little trackers that floated at different depths. They dropped them in the little upper arm and then they monitored over about five or six days where they went in the lake. And so, you guys can see, based on the currents, that stuff from the upper arm does make it way down to the lower arm. So, imagine all the fragments of plants maybe in the upper arm, how they can get moved throughout the lake. Next slide, okay. So, how do we manage aquatic plants? We have the county-sponsored treatments where we do shorelines and boating lanes. We also have the private permits, so they can hire a contractor, they can remove plants by hand out there with just pulling the plants. They can also hire a diver that can go and remove plants and that has really great success in those plots. We also do outreach and education. So, sometimes we have plants that we want to keep in ecosystem, we want people to learn and love those plants and why they're there and the role that they, they serve. And there's some areas of the lake where we don't manage, we want to keep them 100% natural with a vibrant plant community. Here's a snapshot of the county treatments. So, what we show here is, I'm sorry, it's small, I'll zoom in on the next slide. The blue lanes, those are the boating lanes. So, the idea is that you'd have your boat going from the shoreline out into the lake where there's less plants and it'd be plant-free. So, you have boats going in and out without causing any of those fragmentations or getting their motor clogged with plants and fragmenting more plants. The shorelines are, whoop, go back, the yellow, they're parallel along the lake in high-density residential areas. So, the idea is you get out from your dock, you go along the shoreline where there's no plants, you get to a boating lane. We have buoys, red and green buoys marking those boating lanes and then boats can get out in the boating lane out to the big lake and you have less plant growth in those areas, so you're less likely to fragment those boats and you're less likely to get stopped. Then we have high recreation areas, so beaches, parks, where people interacting, putting in canoes, swimming, where we want those areas to be clear of aquatic plants. But a large portion of the lake still has these aquatic plant communities. Next slide. So, this is a close-up of these county treatments and kind of what they look like and they target the high-traffic boat areas. They are paid with mostly geothermal royalties every year, on an average between 150 to 250, so they're very expensive. We actually don't have these funds. A myth is people call me like, where are my tax dollars going? We, we don't actually spend tax dollars on that, we spend the geothermal royalties. And this year, we contracted Clean Lakes and we've had, used Clean Lakes for the past roughly like nine, eight or nine years. And this is the boat doing the treatment and what you notice is they have these lines. So, they're actually directing the herbicide right on the plants and it's a targeted rate and sometimes even climate control these, right? So, it's at a temperature, so it won't move away from where the plant beds are. And they also have a, like a really sophisticated fish finder that can get the size of the plant bed, so they can calculate the exact amount of rate to go right where the plants are. So, they're using the least amount of herbicide to get maximum effectiveness and this company does a really good job at that. So, we reduce plant spread, of course, we want to limit fragmentation, so we do that, of course, by our, preventing our motor, boat motor and plant interactions. Here's an example of what that might look like if you've ever been on your boat and get clogged. We also restrict the use of cutters and harvesters. So, up here on the top right is an example of a cutter, so you can buy them online and they have a little blade and you throw them in the water and it basically like mows the aquatic plants. And then this is a harvester and this is indiscriminate, so it just goes along, it takes the bad plants, it takes the good plants, it takes the baby fish, takes the insects, it just takes them all. So, we don't allow any of these on the lake because they'll cause fragmentation, but also they'll target beneficial species and plants that we like and wildlife that we like. Here's an example of private treatments. Now, I have 2019 on here and 2020 because the drought years were kind of weird and we didn't see a lot of, of plants, permits come in. So, you can kind of get an idea of where these permits, these private permits are issued for both the herbicide, private herbicide license applications and the manual, or manual pulling. And this is our permit, click, 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 and the licensed applicators will fill out the species and the type of herbicide they're using. And then this right here, I'm sorry, it's blurry, but this is all approved by Fish and Wildlife to prevent the take of fish. So, we want to make sure if people out there pulling plants, that they're making noise, they're causing commotion to scare fish out of the way. And this has all been approved with Fish and Wildlife, so we don't have impacts to beneficial species like Clear Lake Hitch. And this is an example, or this is a graphic of average from 2018 to 2020. So, you can see the Sago pond weed, curly leaf pond weed for both the private permits that are submitted and the county treatments. And by far, we have less for the mechanical or the manual pulling and some of the other species distribution. And some examples of education outreach that we do, such as today, but we also have videos[1756.51] But we also have videos online. So here's one where I just talk about some of the aquatic plants that we have on the lake. And then we did a primrose webinar. We also provide educational resources, like the jars that you have today and some pressings. And we attend learning events. So I saw a couple of you guys at the Aquatic Weed Tour that was over at Clark's Island this year. And we also attend community events like Rotary Clubs and Kiwanis Club. And then this is our website, brand-new website. So on this website, you'll have information about the aquatic plant program, also the maps, the treatment maps we have on there, and the reports. Click, click. So these, all the reports, everything we do every year is captured in there and report and report, and then also the management maps that we have. And then also, this presentation and the video for this will be on our website, too, right here under Reports and Data. This will be right there. So quick review. So this program both manages the mechanical and the herbicide for public and private, and the total treated area for herbicide program is less than 1%. So it's a very, very small amount of the surface area of the lake. And we get permit fees from these permits. They're, goes towards sustaining the program, staff time, data tracking. We want to make sure we know, oh, was that a permitted activity, or is that an illegal herbicide use? We also have permits we have to pay. And then we also have to do water quality monitoring to make sure we have quality control and the herbicide that's being used is appropriate and not in excess. And here's an example of an azola treatment. This is over in, I believe, Reeves Lane. So you can see the azola before. It's pretty unsafe. You don't really know where the depth is. You don't know if you're going to hit anything with your boat. Don't really want to go swimming in that. And actually, a dog tried to run on it, thought it was solid, and ran off the dock and actually fell in the water. And you can see after the treatment, there's still some azola there, there's still some aquatic plants, but a lot more sunlight, a lot more safe use of the channel. And without this program, it would literally be the Wild, Wild West. That's what it was before we had the program. We'd have no oversight about what's going on in the lake, where treatments are occurring or what people are doing. We also wouldn't have data tracking. So we wouldn't know if there was an issue, you know, that looked like a discharge or a spill. We wouldn't know, is that because somebody put stuff in the water? It would be very hard for us to investigate and not have any data to go by. The adverse impact, so there could be fish kills from inappropriate treatments. Also, use of non-target products, so people would put whatever they wanted in the lake or different rates, or put products in the time of year where it wouldn't be useful and it'd have adverse effects. This is a drinking water lake, so we have strict rules about where we apply treatments so they don't impact the drinking water purveyors. I send out a notice whenever there's a treatment to all the drinking water purveyors so they know, oh, this is what's going on. They can test it their own water and make sure they're not taking in any of the herbicide. Also, any discharges into public waterways is a Clean Water Act violation. So we go through the Clean Water Act process and permitting, so individual property owners don't have to do that because it's onerous for them. It'd also be a state lands violation. So we manage the lake on behalf of the State Lands Commission, and we have to make sure that it's safe for future generations, and that's part of what this program does. And then lastly, the treatments would not be effective because people wouldn't apply them in the right way at the right time, and so they'd be putting a lot of stuff in the lake and not having the positive output that they would like. So a brief snapshot of the costs and revenue. So a lot of the cost for this program goes into labor, staff time. Water quality testing is very, very expensive. So each time we take a water quality sample, depending on the pesticide, it could cost between $500 and $4,000. And we have a discharge permit through the state. And this is a snapshot. We spend about $28,000. Permit fees, we get in about $18,000. So there's a little discrepancy there. And then this doesn't include the geothermal royalties because those go straight towards the county treatments in and out, straight pass-through for that. So I have two slides for myth busting, or two myths to bust. So false, our treatments lead to decreased fishing. I get this all the time. Oh, you guys did a treatment, and now there's no fishing in that area. Fact, since 2017, there's been no herbicide-induced fish kills, and that sources from fish and wildlife. Also, Clear Lake in 2020 was rated the number-one bass-fishing lake of the decade, and all of this, that decade coincided with doing county herbicide treatments. So not impacting fishing in any way. We also have some state requirements and local requirements on our permit. So on this side of the, back of the permit for herbicides, they can't apply any herbicides when dissolved oxygen is too low or the temperature is too high. And then also, again, we make sure property owners are aware of the Clear Lake hitch and don't have any Clear Lake hitch if they're doing some manual removal, and they have to initial all those in the permit process. The second myth that we get a lot is aquatic herbicides are poison. You guys are putting poison into the lake. The fact, California has some of the strictest herbicide laws in the whole country. And I've worked in four states in aquatic plant programs. California by law has the most strict. So anything that gets put in the water here in California is very regulated, and they're basically versions of types of salts. We're only really allowed to use six aquatic herbicides, and only four of them work very well. glyphosate, which is the product in Roundup, is on that list, but it's not that effective for aquatic plants. So it's really not used. I think I've issued a permit for it once or twice in the last five years. And we also have to do water quality monitoring after treatments, and the water quality has not revealed any exceedances. So the next slide shows a snapshot of, this is from our reports, and ND is no detect. So we monitor water quality before, during a treatment. So right after they do a treatment, we go and take a scoop of the water, and then a week later to make sure there's no residual treatments, and we've never had a detection. And we've never gone over the trigger. So this is a little detection, but it's a way low amount that hasn't gone over the trigger for the requirements. My last two slides, primrose. We get calls about that a lot. This is the primrose, and you can see right now it's popping up in that rosette, and later in the season, it'll have this bright yellow flower. And this is a very unique and problematic species. Next slide. And we've tried, have some trial methods. We've done some solarization, captured up here in the top right. We've done some manual removal, working with a lot of partners to try to figure out the best way to manage this species. And that led to some grants we have right now just for primrose. So we currently have a grant through the Department of Pesticide Regulation for about $350,000 to continue managing primrose. We also got some funds from Blue Ribbon Committee, like I mentioned earlier, for continuing that work with primrose, planning native shorelines, toolies in place of primrose, so we can restore these native shorelines. And the goal is to kind of get all this information together to create a primrose-specific management plan for Clear Lake. And that's what we'll be working on once we get all these grants spent out. So thank you very much. I will take any questions right now. I hope that answered any questions about the aquatic plant program, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just super quick. One of the first maps showed kind of the shoreline emphasis. I assume a lot of this goes in like some of our keys or marinas or tributaries to some extent? Or is it all lake all the time, what this program does?
For the county treatments? I'm trying to get what your question?
Yeah, for the county treatments.
So we don't, county treatments aren't in any private cove. So a lot of actually the coves and channels on the lake are man-made, or, you know, they're in HOAs and POAs, so the county treatments don't treat there. What the county treatments can do is provide a boating lane. So there can be boating lanes. So once you get out of the key, or out of the channel, you can get to the boating lane so you get out to the main lake without getting through the aquatic plant beds that are along the edge. Did that answer your question?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else from the board? I will open it up to the public. I don't see anybody in the chambers. Any questions? No one in the Zoom room? All right. Well, thank you for this presentation and for zipping through it. It was great. It was great. We have a lot to cover today, so really appreciate it. Thanks for the samples. So that was it for our timed items. We can do 519? Did we? Oh, wait, no, we did that one. I didn't cross it off. Sorry. Okay. All right. So then we're done with our consent items, too. So we'll go to our non-timed items.
We did push about 2.4. And I don't know if Director DeLeon is ready or not.
Yes.
We asked for further information.
Right. We did ask for further information. Did you want to do that now?
Do you wish I? I don't know that there's been enough time.
Yeah, 5.24. You want to come back? Was it?
Sorry, I meant 5.19, not 5.24. I thought we did.
Yeah, I think we did this one. Okay.
519, which was the airport one that we said.
Yes, 5.9.
Yeah, and to come back on the 27th.
We're going to go to our untimed items.
Could you have a non-timed item since I'm here?
Yeah, why don't we do that? 7.6. Consideration of change order number one, Cooper Creek Bridge at Witter Springs Road, federal project number BRLO-5914078, bid number 2203 with West Coast Contractors for an increase of $6,062.61 and a revised contract amount of $1,496,872.35. And authorize the chair to sign.
Good afternoon. Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. As the memo states, this is a minor contract change order that is resulting from a change in the type of fence that the contractor needed to install. So, you know, conditions in the field changed after they bid the project, and it went to a more extensive fence type. And so this contract pays for, or this change order pays for the change in the fencing. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Got to keep the cattle contained.
Okay. Any public input in the chambers or the Zoom room? Not seeing any. So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve change order number one, Cooper Creek Bridge at Witter Springs Road, federal project number BRLO-5914078, bid number 22-03 with West Coast Contractors for an increase of $6,062.61 and revised contract amount of $1,496,872.35. And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
7.2, review and consideration of travel and reimbursement policy from our administrative office.
Ms. Hutt, are you comfortable presenting this item?
Yes, I am.
Please come forward.
Hey, welcome.
Good morning, Board. Christine Hutt, administrative analyst with the administrative office. So before you today for your review and consideration is the travel reimbursement policy. Our current travel policy is initially, was initially adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2001, and portions of the policy have been updated at various times throughout the years, the most recent of which was in October of 2018. The current policy is outdated and presents some fiscal problems to the Auditor Controller's Office and the Administrative Office. In May, Stephen Carter and I met with the department heads to review the draft of the policy that had previously been brought before you on May the 2nd. And with their input, the final version has been created, and it is attached as an update to, in today, for today. The policy was, also had a lot of valuable input besides the department heads from the Auditor Controller's Office and County Council. It encompasses eligibility and preauthorization, transportation, lodging, meals, mileage, and claiming reimbursement. Lodging and meals expenses adopt the acceptable rates as published by the General Services Administration, and the mileage reimbursement rate is tied to the rate published by the State of California Controller's Office. And these are significant changes from our current policy. The policy also serves as a qualifying written accountable plan by meeting the criteria as defined by the Internal Revenue Service. Now, some of the highlights of how this is going to impact, how this has changed from our current policy is that meals related to same-day travel is viewed by the IRS as being a taxable event to the employee. The IRS determines travel-related meals to be reimbursed when there is an overnight stay. However, at the discretion of the department head, a department head may, in certain circumstances, approve a same-day meal reimbursement to an employee, however it will be considered taxable income to the employee. Now, there's one other thing with regard to the meals that is varied, will vary a little bit from our new policy, using the per diem rate for meals. And that is that members of a legislative body, in this case, our supervisors, are required by government code to provide receipts for reimbursement. So this would necessitate that the supervisors would provide receipts for the meals. So the per diem rate is the cap of the gross amount that could be spent and reimbursed, but that the supervisors are required, and County Council help with that interpretation of the California State Government Code. Let's see. We've tried to write this policy, well, we did, we hope, have presented the policy in a way that makes it easy for people to find the information they're looking for. Each section is, deals with one topic, for example, meals, or lodging, or travel, or a travel advance, so that the person and employee looking would not have to go through multiple different sections to find the information that they seek. Do you have any questions or comments for me at this point?
Hey, thank you. Do we have questions from the board? Supervisor Spatia?
I just have one, and I think I can go either or. I know I brought it up in my conversation with our CAO yesterday. In section 2.1, general information, I know that at the very top, we give the purpose of this policy, and in the purpose it states it, but where it says transportation expenses may consist of the following while traveling on county business just seems really vague. And I just want to say that the expenses have to be related to county business, not just transportation expenses while traveling. I just feel like it needs that extra connection. But again, I can go either way. I just wanted to bring it up. It was the one thing that I read through that I felt was a little more vague than I would like it to be. That way, it helps restrict it as much as possible.
I can't immediately think of a good word smith on this, but I believe we can do that. That wouldn't be difficult at all. Is it something that we could? I don't want to postpone this if at all necessary, but I'm wondering if we could... Question is, do I need to rewrite this right this second?
And I would ask the rest of the board first, because if there's no need, because the board doesn't think that that's a necessary change, then there's really no reason to even think that one through. So just asking the board if they think that's a reasonable addition or an unnecessary addition.
Well, perhaps, how about this? If we said transportation-related expenses may consist of the following while traveling on county business. If we put in transportation-related expenses, would that suffice?
I know my comfort zone would be more along the lines of transportation expenses, comma, related directly to county business, comma, may consist of the following while traveling on county. I just, I don't know. It seems vague, but...
The way we've interpreted this before with similar wording is it's the only reimbursement for the county business involved with your trip. So if you go, let's say, drive down to Sacramento for something, and you stay an extra day and travel somewhere else and back, we would pay mileage to San Diego and back only, not the excursion to sites. That's why it's always been interpreted, and it can, would continue to be. But no problem with changing that language either.
I don't have a problem with it written, but if you feel it's necessary, I don't, I think either way is fine. It's clear enough to me, but I can go either way.
Yeah, I'm the same. I'm fine with it the way it's presented.
Because out in public, we are interpreting it that way, though.
The intent and interpretation is appropriate.
Okay.
I'm good with moving forward.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. There's several link-outs in this draft document, and I understand why they're there because you have to rely on GSA and other things. The problem is, I feel like I need to link out to two different things to calculate what my per diem is going to be or my reimbursable rate. It'd be nice, even if the policy had to be updated and had to have a table of sorts, it'd be nice to not cite out, so that, if only because, one, I'm going to get lost, or I'm forgetting to link out. Two, when we're linking out to third-party sources, even if they're the authoritative source, they're, when you're reading the website versus the policy, there could be some room for interpretation that maybe you don't want. You probably want to cite out to these, so there isn't any interpretation, so. And I'm looking at pages sixteen, pages fifteen, pages seven. So that's one comment is, is, you know, is it all link-outs all the time? Is there something we can do to just have some printouts attached to our policy, so that people have it right in front of them? My second comment is more of a rant, but discretionary gratuities, when you have a, you know, when you go out to a conference and you're having a thing, if you're in a large party, the discretion, the gratuity will be added on, and the whole party will be on the tap for it. But discretionary gratuities, I imagine there's some state or federal policy that precludes us from reimbursing for that. It's just a particularly frustrating exclusion.
I'd like to comment on the links. The purpose of having the links is, first of all, to, yes, they would, the, the employee or department head could go to the source that we're citing for the per diem rate, for the mileage reimbursement rate, and those are, those change. The, the G S A office changes, the State of, Controller's Office changes their mileage reimbursement rate as well. And if we were to make a part of this policy, for example, a printout of what today's rates were, every time there would be a change, we would be back before the Board to reapprove the change to the policy. And we were trying to avoid that, because it's time-consuming, and we thought it would be easier to just put the link. So the thing would always have the current information.
My response would be, it's also time-consuming for employees to go out there and hunt and find the information. So I appreciate that from time to time, the federal rates may change. I don't think it's a major inconvenience to bring it back and update that policy. That's just my comment.
Okay. Well, I think after all the work that's been put into this, this is a document that can stand for time without having to do the updates, and, you know, it's just something that we'll do when we check on travel, is see where the rates are and what the reimbursements will be.
I, I think having a link is a better way to go. Before, we had a specific number in there, and we're trying to get away from that, because things change on a regular basis, or irregular basis. I guess the comment did lead me to think that in dealing with websites, links do come and go. At that, what's our process for checking the links? And I guess at that point, we bring it back, just because, is there a way to say this link, or on the G S A website? Is there a way to expand that, so that we don't have to continuously bring it back whenever the link changes? Just a thought. I mean, right now, I think it's good, but we all know that we just updated our website, and things aren't exactly at the exact same address that they used to be. And I'm sure G S A has a five-year plan of renewing their, their website as well. So I, I think today, we approve what it is, but just a thought process on links come and go as well, as a number that would be on there. How do we make it so that maybe it just talks about what the website base address is, as well as potentially this one? I, I don't know what the answer is.
I will tell you that the, the links that we have in here, rather than diving into a specific year, for example, the mileage reimbursement rates of the state website, the Controller's website, it actually has a whole list, when you go to a certain page of each year that they have updated their rates. And instead of doing it to a year, we just made it the page where you would then have to select which year you want. For the, for the, the General Services Administration site. I believe we also found that parent page that then lets you dive deeper and find it, because really with the, with the per diem rates, it depends on your city that you're going to, the city, your geographical designation. So you have to select one. It doesn't, and that one is not necessarily date-related. They update their rates for all their geographical locations at their own, in their own timing. They don't really tell you when they've done it. They just have made it updated whenever they do. So you're just going geographically. We've tried to make it generic enough so that, well, not so generic that you have to get lost in a major website, but I, I hear you, and I think that's a good idea, that we should periodically check them. And if necessary, then we update those links.
Sure, when an employee clicks on it to get that information, you'll hear from them.
Yeah, we'll know right away.
Right.
But I, I'm just looking for a future way, again, today, let's approve and move on, but is there a way in the future, and maybe our County Council can help us to create a, somewhat of a generic link, so that no matter if it changes on the website, we can change it there? Because what's the difference between coming back and changing the link, versus coming back and changing the, the price?
Definitely will think about it, because that's a, a good idea. Which just gave me another idea that we might use to put it on our internet, a link which can be updated, the employee clicks there. Right. And that we update.
Nice.
Good idea.
So we'll be thinking about that for a possible change on what might actually work.
Okay.
One last thing. So part of this is documentation, so the employee is called out to do a printout of the webpage. You have to print out a webpage to support whatever you're claiming. Can't we just have them put down whatever they're claiming, and if there's some dispute about that? Who's reviewing this? Auditor Controller? I, I just don't know why they have to document what's already, we're citing out to an existing thing, so if there's any question about it, why can't somebody else verify that, versus each and every claim has to come in with a printout of the webpage?
So whether it's the auditor's office staff or the person traveling, someone has to go to that website and verify? And technically, would be far, I would think that that would be on the employee traveling, not the auditor's office, who is receiving tons of these claims.
If you want to get paid back, you have the incentive to submit.
That's right.
You have to go look to know what to put on your form. So hit print now.
Okay. We have any questions from the public? Not seeing any? So we'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve travel and reimbursement policy effective July one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you so much. All right, so it's just about twelve-thirty, and we have a few more items. Do we want to take lunch now and come back for the remaining?
Either way, we got to take a lunch at one point.
Yeah.
I'm good with lunch now.
All right, let's, let's come back at one-thirty P M. All right, welcome back. We're going to continue with item seven point three, consideration of Public Defender Contract Amendment Number Ten between the County of Lake and Lake Indigent Defense, L L P, for the purpose of extending the term of the contract to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and increasing monthly contract amount one hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, to fund an additional felony attorney, and authorize the chair to sign. And this is from Admin.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. As your Board may recall, on April eighteenth, we had a position allocation item that was pulled from consent and discussed further, as far as the future of the Public Defender Program. At that time, the Board heard several comments from L I D and other partners, and gave direction to staff to return with an extension. And during those discussions and negotiations, they did request additional funding for an eighth felony attorney. We have come to an agreement after several meetings, and propose this amend, a contract amendment for Board consideration. Oh, and Carlos is here to, you know, also to speak on this matter, if you wish to ask him any questions. Sorry, Carl.
Okay, do we have questions? Supervisor Sabatier, do you have a question? Looks like it.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you. So I don't have it in front of me, my computer's reloading, I apologize for that. I know that we looked at a timeline for what this transition of creating our own statutory office in-house would look like. That timeline was anywhere between twelve months to eighteen months, something along those lines. This contract extension is for twelve months. I feel like we're just setting ourselves up to be right back where we started in our last meeting that we discussed, and I'm wondering if there can be an added line saying with possible extension for an additional six months, or possible extension for an additional year, just to help us end them with the relationship, and for us to continue in our transition as we move forward with the steps that we've agreed upon. Just wondering if that would be helpful for everything that we're trying to do, rather than having to come back again and do another extension? Because I could just foresee, we're just going to come back and do another extension in the long run.
Supervisor Sabatier, I, I think that's a very reasonable concern, that twelve months from now, we will find ourselves looking to extend possibly six months, twelve months, wherever we are in the process. But I would hesitate from incorporating that immediately into this current contract, because before this contract would end, we would most certainly have hired our chief P D. And at that point, whatever contract we develop at the end of this one that we're contemplating now, would look much different. And so it would be less continuing this contract, or extending this contract, and it would be more looking towards a whole new contract that would acknowledge that we have a chief P D, and that would acknowledge the changing nature of what L I D is providing at that point.
Okay. I, I could take that answer, and happy to move forward. I just wanted to see if there was a way to help out, rather than being told they can't hire people, because there's only so much time, they can't provide more services, because there's only so much time. I was trying to help with that whole relationship, but you, you are right, that changes are occurring month by month, step by step, and that will change the face of whatever next contract looks like, so. Okay?
Any other questions?
Just a follow-up question, obviously, communication with L I D. And I know that, I saw someone in the audience earlier today, that probably wanted to come on this, comment on this item, and just looking if, I really liked that we went with the timed item last time, too, so give them an opportunity to make sure, and they may be online, I may be preemptively saying something, but, you know, really keeping that communication open as we're moving forward here. So if we could just entertain that of a timed item issue, even if it is something that's routine, and there may not be any more specifically to the contract coming up until next year.
Oops, sorry.
Making sure that we continue down that.
I'm leaving, sorry.
That collaboration, as we're building the new program, so that, that's all.
I agree.
Okay, then I will open it up to the public, and I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone? I joined Zoom, but. All right, not seeing any hands up, and we'll bring it back to the Board for action. Bring it back to the Board for action. Let me ask one more time. A public comment, anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, not seeing any, I'll close it and.
No hands.
Bring it back for action.
Magic, uh, magic channel, where that came from.
We haven't even started, magic.
Oh, man, that's a good lunch. So, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Public Defender Contract Amendment Number Ten between the County of Lake and Lake Indigent, Indigent Defense, L L P, for Indigent Defense Services for the purpose of extending the term of the contract to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and increase the monthly contract to one hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion passes. We will go to seven point four, consideration of the following Advisory Board appointment. We have Mel McMurray for the Cobb Area Council, and Chris McLeod for Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. And we had our presentation last week from the Cobb Area Council, who acknowledged Mel as the alternate, so I'm fine with that appointment, and I know you had. I'll just turn it over to you.
I requested for Chris McLeod to be brought back for the Fish and Wildlife, and so that application is there because of my request to Johanna, so happy to move forward.
Okay, comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just on the Cobb application, I noticed, and A K A, so I just want to confirm that Mel McMurray is a legal name before we make the appointment.
I, I don't know. I mean, it says J. Melton, A K A Mel. I'm, I don't know, I, I think it's fine to appoint him as Mel McMurray. Lloyd?
I just want to note, Mel McMurray are not the same name, so I certainly will support the appointment as soon as I know who it is.
Well, A K A is also known as, so perhaps if the Board decides to make this appointment for this person, staff can follow up with verifying the identity, the person and the name, upper name.
I think it's important to appoint him as Mel McMurray, so that the community is aware of, of who he is, because that's the name that he uses. Okay. Anybody in the public? Anyone in the Zoom room with a comment? Not seeing any, so we'll bring him back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Chris McLeod to the Fish and Wildlife District Two position.
Second. Oh, sorry. No, it's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Mel McMurray to the Cobb Municipal Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we will move on to seven point five, consideration of designating County of Lake Board of Supervisors representative for North Coast Opportunities Governing Board. County Council is going to look into this, but I also see Supervisor Sabatier has his pen up.
Oh, sorry. I was playing with it.
Oh. Okay. Go ahead, Lloyd.
Yes, this is a carryover from a prior two board meetings, and with the North Coast, North Coast Opportunities Governing Board making the appointment for Jeff Lucas to be a member of that board, they are now requesting that he, that the County of Lake Board of Supervisors designate him as the representative, the elective official or officials for the County of Lake, in serving the North Coast Opportunities Governing Board. So pursuant to the Board's direction from the last meeting, from the previous meeting, there is a resolution that outlines the conditions and the terms of that designation, among which would be that he provide, that Mr. Lucas would provide quarterly reports to the Board during the term of his office or membership in the N C O governing board.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate the work that was done on this. I know that Supervisor, or Chair Paeska and myself did have a conversation with Jeff We were entertaining the idea that was brought up last time, of a Board of Supervisor taking on that role. I don't want to volunteer somebody, but I do believe Chair Paeska said that she would make the effort to take on that role, and I offered to support her as an alternate. That way, it wasn't just on one individual to represent this Board, that we can share the burden of the large amount of work that N C O does, unless you've changed your mind since we last spoke.
Haven't changed my mind, but we did have a conversation with Mr. Lucas. He was uncomfortable at being a Board Representative. He, it wasn't something that he really wanted to do. He wants to serve on the N C O Board in a different capacity, and really felt it was more appropriate to have a supervisor appointed to that seat. So that is a conversation that we had with him. What's that, last week?
Thursday, or, I think it was Thursday.
Week before?
No, it was last week. Yeah, no, it was last week.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, so that's where we're at right now, is, well, okay, so we'll just open it up for discussion, and I think Supervisor Green, did you have your pen up?
Well, I did, and then my ears perked up, because I heard we were going possibly in a different direction, so. I guess I would share at least some of any discomfort that was expressed by Mr. Lucas, if only because of, and I do want to thank staff, the resolution is fine as far as it goes, but I can think of, for example, on occasion, this Board wanting to give direction to a representative before it goes to N C A Board, like, right now, the resolution would call for a quarterly report, so there's no real mechanism where we could ask our representative, or give direction on any particular issue. And then, of course, N C O occasionally contracts with the counties, so occasionally, even if he is on the Board as a county rep, he may have to conflict out, or something like that, But if I read the narrow reading of this, if we designate a representative, the N C O Board that is a supervisor, that supervisor, with the Board's consent, could still choose somebody else. So for example, if we're splitting the baby in half, we could appoint a Board Member, we could appoint an alternate, but we could also then have the, the primary supervisor, say, for example, Mr. Lucas, you're my rep, you know, if I can't go to the meeting, or you'll just routinely go to the meeting on the Board's behalf, but if something is coming up, let me know. If you need direction from the Board, or if there's a conflict item coming up, just let us know, so that there's this kind of dialogue between the appointed supervisor and then the representative. So I'll certainly. supervisor and then the representative. So I'll certainly support if you just want to do a simple board appointment and alternate, that seems to be the cleanest. But I do see some wiggle room where we could let Mr. Lucas serve on the board on behalf of the county with maybe a little bit more opportunity for direction, so he's not just floundering out there saying, I represent the board, not really having any clear direction from the board.
Yeah. So again, he's just not comfortable with the appointment. So I think we can just direct staff to have the conversation with NCO about having a board appointment with an alternate backup so that we can have those meetings covered, and hopefully he will be serving in a different role.
Just a quick question. I know, I think it's, I don't know the name for it, Natural Resources for RCR, CMO. I know that Lars, is that the right one?
ESGPA.
Yep.
So Lars, but he is county employee, a little different. He is the main, I am the alternate, and Lars is the one who goes to all meetings.
I just use that as an example, because if that's the case, then I know that if we had a, you know, representative of the county as a staff member and then a board supervisor, would that work in this situation, too? Or would you need supervisor and another supervisor, if that makes sense?
I think the NCO Board, at least from what they've told me, is, at this point, just looking for one representative of the, of an elected official of the county. I know that the regulations do allow, in some circumstances, an appointment be made, that an appointment would consist of a county, a member of the staff or county employee in some circumstances. So that is, I think the starting point would be to, for staff pursuant to your board's direction, to contact the NCO Board, because they would be making that appointment. And so the request for these changes would have to be.
I'm speaking too soon, then.
Well, yeah, but certainly those are addressed in the, in the regulations as a, as a possibility, as possible option.
Okay.
And we, there is a staff member who is on the board, and so I think we just have staff have that conversation about how they can be in compliance, in compliance, and then come back to us with some needs. Go ahead.
And I think it was somewhat touched upon, and I would like to maybe just come and speak with you and Chair Paeska, just because it's a separate appointment, not appointment by the board, but at the same time, there's times where we see NCO contracts that come before us. Just want to make sure we're clear on the potential conflict of interest, and when we might need to recuse ourselves on one end, and possibly recuse ourselves on a different end, just so that we don't end up in a conflict situation.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah. I did a question that I asked last time. Who was the last appointment that the board, I hadn't seen this in my six years that I've been here. So there was a comment that in the past, that maybe a board member was on when it started. Was there any information found, historical information on that?
We have not found any, but certainly that would, that could be a question that I could pose to, or staff can pose to the members of the NCO Governing Board. I believe Mr. Lucas, in their appointment, started his two-year term just this year, March of 2023.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Do we have any, did I have to do a public comment? I don't think I did. Am I opening up for public comment? Check the Zoom room. We do have a hand up. Betsy Khan, go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if this whole history can be covered in three minutes, but I can tell you this. You have two different boards that you're dealing with. North Coast Opportunities is a nonprofit, private California public benefit corporation, and the Community Action Agency has its own board, but that function was blended into the NCO Board. The reason you want to have supervisors or their delegates on the Community Action Agency Board is because those are the programs that benefit the county that NCO brings to you separately from the contracts you are doing with their business side. There was, in 2012, the Lake County NCO Board was dissolved after a really scandalous event. And going forward from that, the board appointed citizens to be their representatives. Gloria Flaherty was one of those. I'm sure you recall that name. But that hasn't been done for many years, just like your list of committees, boards, and commissions needs to be weeded out. But you need to have representative to be sure that the Community Action Agency funding is being spent properly for our communities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close public input, and we've given direction to staff. I think we have consensus for that. Yes. Okay. And we'll move on to the next item. Seven, let's see, we did seven point five, seven point seven. Consideration of the distribution of excess proceeds in the amount of $333,121.90 from tax default tax sale number 159 held on June 5th, 2021, per R and T 4675. And this is from our treasurer, tax collector.
So Mr. Sullivan is not in the office today, but Ms. Martinez should be available, and there she is.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Liz Martinez, Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector. So we are asking for your board's approval to disperse excess proceeds from our tax sale 159 that was conducted in June of 2021 in the amount of $333,121.90. These funds are the excess monies over the minimum bids. They can be claimed by parties that have interest in the property, including the prior owners, but we are required to get the board's approval to disperse these monies.
Okay. Is that it? Any other questions? Questions from the board? Okay. Questions from the public? Not seeing any hands up. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, if I may, as far as, if your board's willing to consider the motion language itself, if your board proceeds to approve what's being requested, it would be a motion to approve the distribution of excess proceeds in the amount of $333,121.90 from tax default land sale number 159 held on June 5th, 2021 pursuant to our Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 4675. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our final untimed item, yes, is calendars? Okay. Who is ready?
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
So go on with last week, well, this week, Russian River Water Forum, we had that Monday. They added a new, a new person to the group, or new entity to the group. And let me pull it up real quick right here. It was like a, there we go. Outcomes, Kickoff Meeting, Planning Group Charter, and it was to add the group called, I want to say, not Steelhead, I can't think of the name off the top of my head, but it's like Indigenous Salmon or something of the like. I just can't, I thought I had it right here, but it's not. Anyhow, this new group was added to the committee, and so was Robinson Rancheria. They both had representatives come. Nicole Whipple was from the Salmon, the other Salmon group. And so it was, there were some statements made by some other counties, and it was frustrating to hear because, you know, we had recommended to add Lake Pillsbury Alliance as a separate group, and some other entities stated, well, we did add Lake Pillsbury Alliance, so I mean, we might as well just, you know, add others. It's Save California Salmon, that's the group, sorry about that. And, and so I just corrected that. They said we were already representing Lake Pillsbury, and that's not the case. We have, you know, we're not exactly in alignment with everything that's, you know, that's wanting to be represented for. So just, you know, had some discussion about that. There was a, there still is some feedback that we can give as regards to the timeline, keys to success, and the, the planning discussion, and what they, what we all would like to achieve. And, and so, yes, we'll be addressing some of those things. And that was that. I don't know what, how else to make it sound. It wasn't something that I was really stoked about having, especially considering that each of these groups that are part of it, on each basin, they stand to gain, we stand to lose, and that's just simply that. And they expect us to comment in a way that benefits either side. And we're like, well, you want us to say yes, you can have what we're losing, no problem, without you even advocating for what we want. So that's what's frustrating about it. I don't know how else to state it, except for that way. So that's how that meeting went, in my opinion. We'll continue to do what we can in regards to having our voice, but not going to pretend like we want to see our resources go into another area. It's the common theme when it comes to Lake County. We have resources, other people want it, and they expect us to just kind of idly allow it to happen. And so that's where that was. Of course, we have budget hearings this week, so we'll be doing that Wednesday and Thursday. I have NACO Leadership Friday. Tuesday, we have the Middle Creek Project Development Meeting we'll be able to attend, since Tuesday's no meeting. So we'll be doing that. Area Agency on Aging, Wednesday, the 21st. They rescheduled it from last week. And then I'll have Worth West Region Town Hall Thursday, Water Rights Management Group. And this is, this is a group, working group out of the Russian River Water Forum. And so we'll be attending, I'll be attending that. And that was the group that I signed up for, because water rights is one of the things that we've advocated for. I think Supervisor Spatia, in the last meeting, you accentuated that to the whole group, so, yeah.
Make sure they heard us.
Right. And so Friday, NACO Leadership Group, the 26th will be the third Honoring All Voices, and this will be in Clear Lake. And so we'll be doing that at 6:00 PM. I think it's at the Clear Lake City Hall, right? And then back here on the 27th for the Board of Supervisors.
Go ahead.
All right. There was something I wanted to discuss. In addition to the Russian River Forum, we did meet with Water Resources.
Yeah.
As well. It's always nice to educate people on who and what Lake County is, but I have to admit, slightly disappointing to know that they haven't researched to find out about us. But I think that I left the discussion feeling positive. They want to meet with us already the following Friday. We weren't able to coordinate that, but they wanted to meet with us fairly quickly to continue the discussions rather than stop the discussions right there and then. So I think that's a positive, especially since we were with the Director of Water Resources rather than just frontline staff. And I think that tells us that they're interested in hearing from us and learning and figuring out what may not be happening. And I think that we had a good conversation. Just wanted to let you know that our system for PEG is ready. We are starting to do some training to get our videographers trained and ready to go. I believe June 21st might be the first day for training for your, is that Upper Lake that you have a meeting on the 21st?
Yeah.
So that's going to be the first, and then on the 26th, they'll be in the City Hall chambers utilizing that same system for another training day. And then hopefully after that, we'll be able to let that loose and allow those approved videographers to go to all the other MACs if they're invited to do so. As far as moving forward, budget hearings, hopefully if we're done by tomorrow after 5:00 PM, I have a EMLN meeting with the NACO group. There's a city council meeting that evening as well. The following day, I'm pretty much taking the whole day to tour the geysers. It's been five years in the making, so it's about time that I get out there. I do have an interview with somebody about wildfire threats. I believe it's, you've been getting those emails, too, I think. Is it Texas? It's some, it's some university, but won't take too much of my time. And then the following, Monday's pretty clear. Been filling it up so far for Tuesday, have some Hope Rising stuff, have some Army Corps stuff for Middle Creek Restoration. And then I'm excited about a meeting that's coming up later on that Tuesday with both of the community colleges, two separate school districts, and the hospitals, as well as our fire district to discuss workforce and getting those programs either more often through the community college or spread out from the community college into our local high schools to help create EMT and paramedics. One of our issues is we don't have enough transport, but we can buy all the ambulances we want, but if we don't have the staff to actually provide the service, then that goes nowhere. So there's been a lot of requests for that to happen, because even the hospitals themselves can use EMT and paramedics in our ER and whatnot. So there's opportunities, and we're going to see what we can do to expand that. After that, I am gone until the 26th. Then I'll be back at City Hall to be part of the Visioning Forum, and here on the 27th for Tuesday.
All right. Let me back up. I did attend the Lakeport City Council last Tuesday, another fun budget, first look at their budget for the next year. Of course, their sources of revenue are much different than the county's, and it was pretty lean and mean. And I imagine City Clear Lake may have similar issues. So in terms when we are talking about, you know, partnering with our partner agencies, this might be a tough year for the cities. So, you know, it's not like the sky is falling, but they're certainly not looking to bring on a whole bunch of new capital projects. Unfortunately, I missed Children's Council. Some type of scheduling thing going on last Wednesday. It was an LCOE, I just somehow didn't get it. Did Mental Health Advisory Board briefly on Thursday. They're plugging along, and excited to hear whatever next steps are going to be going on with our Behavioral Health Department. I got one of my last orientations on Friday, so thank you to Wendy. I'm on friends from probation. Got a good little tour of the building. I'm not saying it's haunted, but maybe it is. I also want to thank Captain Dowdy from Kelseyville Fire. I had a little meeting with him on Friday to go over some of our committees that we work together on. Saturday, Lake County Home Wine and Beer Makers Festival was well-attended and well-lubricated, and it was good to see people out there enjoying themselves. And of course, that's a fundraiser for Lake County Symphony. So, so many of our nonprofits have struggled after COVID, so it's good to see people out there supporting good causes. On Sunday, we had a Neighbor Fest in Scotts Valley at a little place I've never seen before, Medina's Watering Hole. That was actually sponsored, funding anyway, came through NCO. One of our Advisory Council members, Cornelia Seber Davis, helped coordinate that, and it was very well-attended and well-received. So I want to thank Cornelia, all the Advisory Council members who made a showing there, and all the partner organizations that were out there. They had a good list. They had BLM, they had Lake County Library, Red Cross, and I'm going to leave somebody out. But it was a really good first effort, and I'm looking forward to see that come next year. Yesterday, I did 10 portions of the Department of Cannabis Control's Locals Roundtable. They did some breakout sessions. I did a little bit on equity, a little bit on SEQA. And it's definitely a mixed bag, but it is good to see them at least make some initial steps toward a good connection with local communities. I don't know how today's going to go, but Lakeport Fire tonight, if I can get out there, I want to see what's going on with them.
Can I ask you to repeat the last one? Who was that group that you were talking about?
Cannabis group?
It was called a Locals Roundtable, and it was put on B DCC, and I don't know how to describe it. It was kind of a longer program with some breakout rooms. They talked about SEQA, they talked about equity, they talked about enforcement, and there were a couple of the breakout. there were a couple of the breakout rooms. So it, it was, it was cool. It kind of ran long, and some of the sessions ran short and all that, but it, but it definitely was good to see them do some local outreach to local stakeholders, and that's, that's what that was about.
Thank you. I missed the DCC, that's.
Oh, Department of Cannabis Control, which is the unified of what used to be the three-headed monster of state agencies that formerly regulated that.
So I, I have a question about your representation on that. It's because it's not a board designation. Are you representing as an individual or?
I wasn't clear on what their expectation was. They just threw up the webinar, and whoever showed up, showed up.
So I think it was like a listening session type of thing.
Yeah. I got plenty of contacts. I can pass them along if you want to do some additional outreach. Locals@cannabis.ca.gov is our designated channel, so I know that right off the get-go. Continuum of care on your calendar for tomorrow or not? Again, my calendar keeps bouncing up and down.
I ignore whatever's happening tomorrow.
Yeah. Tomorrow's just budget.
I mean, I mean Thursday, apologies.
Yeah, it's on there, but there's, it's most likely not.
Well, I'll be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
All day tomorrow and all day Thursday.
All right. Well, I just want to clarify that because I don't know if anything is going on. If there is anything going on with COC, it's, it's likely important, so I just want to make sure we staff that if it is COVID. That is all I got.
Okay.
Starting after the board meeting last week, attended LTA APC meeting in the morning, left early, obviously, to spend the day with ribbon-cutting session at the Conocti Corridor, the first segment of that project being completed. $85 million project, that is a four-lane project just past Kits Corner. That is a first phase and a three-phase, eight-mile project that is continuing on. So also attended that with Chair Peiska and also Supervisor Spatia. Myself and Chair Peiska, obviously, were both speakers at that event. I just wanted to thank, you know, Caltrans APC for long-term vision, all the previous county employees and the board that has pushed us along. So also want to thank Stacy Matina, the Chair of the APC, and LTA Boards. So it was a good event, got nice and windy there at the end, but it seemed like, you know, obviously, it was, it was well-attended. I think it showed once again Lake County's collaboration. We had state, we had county, we had representation from the tribal nations. We also, you know, just really understand how it is important to get the traffic both from 101 to 5 across the county in the safest route. We had a conversation about North Shore, South Shores, removing the traffic around there, but just a great project and a good event to be participating in that. CHP and all the other agencies that were there. Supervisor Spatia, go ahead.
And a letter of support from our federal representative.
Absolutely, Congressman Thompson. I was, Chair Peiska said that she read it. So, you know, so finished up that day, you know, with that event. Thursday, had the South Deal Committee meeting with Supervisor Crandall. You know, talked about a lot of different projects are happening in Lake County. Supervisor Crandall really talked about the Cash for Trash Day, I think is that what it's called?
Well, yeah, it was last month, the Fight Against Blight Clash Against Trash. And so I was highlighting how, because they were talking about their cleanup programs, and I was highlighting, highlighting how that worked out for us and that if there was a way they can, you know, you know, designate some sort of funding for that and on Long Highway 20 or any other area, it would be great, it would be used. Yeah, so.
So, you know, not only on the individual projects that are going on through the county, obviously Conocti Corridor was a big conversation there, but there are a lot of small projects that are still happening here. Caltrans is doing a lot of work in Lake County and continuing to push for the, the success of our county and working together. So good meeting, you know, that, that always happens. It's always on Zoom, it is a quarterly meeting. But one of the things that we're constantly doing, still working, which I'm very happy for, the abandoned vehicle abatement program, they haven't, they're still pushing, trying to figure out how to get that into the Clean California Program. They know Lake County, Mendocino County are definitely interested in doing this, and I know they're still pushing for it. So we'll continue to have those conversations as we're working through things. I want to thank them also, too. There is a small project in, for Coyote Valley, or the Coyote Grade, you know, got done a couple of years ago. There's been slight issues. They worked diligently to have it open, 99% of it open during the holiday, but now it's completely open with some fixtures, fixes they've done, but we'll see next year when the rain comes as far as those projects happen. So with LTA APC also working, too, I have put in a request that Lisa Davis Bates, hopefully we can get her to go to the meetings. I know we talked about that at LTNA PC. I did make that request at the corridor, the ribbon-cutting. Like to have her on there. She obviously is in Communications, they have their own standalone meetings, or they work with them, but I would like to, you know, just see, see what the answer is when that comes back. So I will continue it on. Obviously, they're doing a lot of grass cutting and other things, too, Caltrans throughout the county. I think they cut it once, but the rains made them come back and cut it again. So they're, you know, I see their equipment out there and want to do that. So I didn't make the math meeting Thursday night, had some stuff that I had to take care of, so didn't make it to the math meeting. Also had the Geothermal Advisory Committee at 1:30 on Thursday. I thought that was a good meeting. I did hear today on a project, we kind of prodded some folks to get a project done up in your area, maybe move forward, which is awesome. Yeah, so. Yeah. Cal said something earlier today. So anyway, anyway, good meetings as we move forward. There are some appointments we need to get for the Geothermal Advisory Committee. I think they are in my, my district, and we'll slowly work through those as we move in the process. So appreciate Scott Harder, continuing the conversation, having those meetings. Thank Calpine for letting us have the meeting at their facility. And then on, too much on Friday, make it through the weekend here. Yesterday was 24th wedding anniversary for myself and my wife, so I made sure to do that.
anniversary!
Making it along. Yeah, she's one hell of a lady, putting up with me. I thought I'd give her all the credit in the world. So, you know, this week is budget hearings. Hopefully, we're out of here sometime on Thursday. That's, come on, guys, let's.
Sometime is a good time.
Yeah, a little bit earlier. The Lower Lake Action Committee Group has moved their meeting to Tuesday, so see, it's on my calendar for tonight. We'll see if I get there by the end of the day. And then Friday, I'm going to try and make that tree mortality, that's on my calendar. Oh, no, I'm not going to make that because I forgot I have Workforce Alliance North Bay Governing Board meeting at 9:00, so I will.
This, this Friday, right?
Yep, this Friday. So I will make sure, I will go to that meeting, I'm going to that meeting, so.
We moved the tree mortality to 1:00.
Okay.
Did you get it? You didn't get that invite?
Oh, yeah, it does say 1:00. I thought it said 11:00. So I'm going to try and make both those. I may attend that in person in Napa. It's about the same distance coming over, coming to Lakeport or going the other way for me. That is something, Bruno, I will mention what you're doing with the schools, looking at that EMT program and stuff. I know they've done some pilot programs in Marin, so I will at least let Bruce Wilson know, hey, we're looking to bring something like that to Lake County, reach out to our county staff. I'll also try and find, get him a time to come up and do a report to the board and make the conversation. Should we get Bruce up here? Maybe you have some information on that some.
I do, it's July 21st, is it not?
Well, done. I won't bug him no more.
I'm sorry, July 18th.
All right, so we'll continue those conversations as we're moving forward. I won't be here at that time.
Yeah, that's when he's gone. We need to reschedule.
I think it's more important for the board to hear it. I continue to go to the meetings, you know, to support it. I'm fine if it happens, well, I'm out of town, so.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
We work as a good unit here. That, I'll always put that out there. If there's something I think needs to be held off, I'll ask for that. Other than that, you know, that's, that's enough. So, man, I got to keep going, be quiet here. So Juneteenth, obviously, it was talked about, the Middletown Arts Center, we doing that. I want to say Happy Father's Day to everybody, you know, all the fathers. So hope you enjoy the 18th, Sunday, the 18th. Hopefully you don't have to do nothing, but that never works out that way. And then kind of open calendar next week, and then at the end of the week, I'm excited, we have the RRA Strategic Planning Session. And then followed up with that, we have the RRR meeting on the 26th and back here on the 27th. I think that's everything.
Did you have something else tied?
Did I?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, just, just real quick follow-up. You guys tickled my brain cells. So the, the DCC event was more of a listening session, kind of a roundtable. They did talk about a task force, and it was confusing at first because there's so many task forces going on, so there's already an enforcement kind of task force, a multi-agency thing, and that sprung up, and that's got a U in it. It's a unified something task force on the enforcement side. But what the agency as a whole is interested is getting some feedback from counties about a task force that they are proposing to appoint that would help guide them. And it was hard to really focus on what the plan was because they have so much in their portfolio now, everything from illegal cannabis enforcement to compliance work with permities and licensees to, you know, equity and tax compliance and stuff like that. So, you know, if they did have a task force, who would it be appointed? It would be a board member, a department head that deals with them mostly, or some variation of that. So I do expect we're going to be hearing more about that task force in their continuing public outreach. Cassandra Di Benedetto, I believe, is their new engagement officer. So I'll keep an eye out for that, but there is going to be at least a task force of sorts proposed, and they will be doing some outreach to local governments to see their interest in participating on that task force, whatever it may be called and whatever its scope may eventually turn into. So just wanted to share that. We'll, we'll have future opportunities for engagement, either in a formal way through the task force or through other ways, through whatever outreach that task force and the agency does.
And I did have something else. I know you weren't talking to me, but I completely skipped right over Middletown Days. Middletown Days is happening this weekend. You know, it starts Friday night, obviously. Saturday is the parade, the barbecue following afterwards at Central Park, all of the equestrian events that we have going on. Please come down and enjoy it. Seems like it's going to be a beautiful weekend. You know, it's coming together, a lot of work that all the local volunteers, Central Park Agency, Lions Club, you know, CHP, everybody helps us put that on. I think we're getting some support from Clear Lake, as far as a couple of officers for closing down 29. It's hard to close down a state route, so getting all that cooperation. So Middletown Days, once again, is happening this weekend on Father's Day. Sunday, there's a Father's Day breakfast, pancake breakfast at the Lions Club, so maybe we'll be in trouble.
And it's not going to be 120 degrees.
And it's going to be nice weather.
Love a Middletown Days where you don't die. Okay. So, oh my gosh, just the last couple of weeks have been insane. I did go to the ribbon-cutting ceremony. It was, I was really honored to be there. I read Congressman Thompson's letter. That was a massive infrastructure improvement for our county and District 5, making our roads safer, so it was a really great event. Even though I wasn't part of all the work, I really appreciate my colleagues and everyone else in the county that, that worked on that over the last several years, many decades. We've, getting ready for the Risk Reduction Strategic Planning Meeting. We had some pre-planning meetings, so we can hit the ground running with that. We did have the Geothermal Advisory Committee. We had Open Mountain for the first time. They are the new company that's taken over the old Bottle Rock plant, so it's great to have them there. And just re-establishing the original intent of that committee, getting back on track. And again, really great support from Scott Harder and special districts, keeping us all up to date on rules and bylaws and intent and purpose and facilitating the meeting. So thank you so much, Scott, for your listening. Then I went to Kelseyville High School for the Senior Awards for KCor, and I'm hoping that you guys, you guys will get to meet some of the KCor kids on the 27th. We're going to do a proclamation, and hopefully they'll be able to join us. I did go with staff to Reynolds Systems, again, for another follow-up meeting with their expansion. We have more staff headed out there. Their expansion is incredible. And then we have, something we've been working on for a while is the Soda Bay evacuation route, and we got a grant for that about a year ago. And so we've got our consultant engaged, and we had a multi-agency meeting for about two hours on Friday, first of a few information gatherings. So I really want to thank everyone who, who sat through that meeting. I, I know this is a busy time of year, but it's a really important project, and hopefully can, we can view this as a pilot project for the other evacuation plans that we're required to have in our safety element. Over the weekend, oh, no, Monday, yes, I was working on the budget. And then tomorrow, I have the Cobb Alert Radio Network. I'm just going to remind everybody because we had our presentation Wednesday night, 6:30. Everyone's going to be checking in, so hopefully I'll be home from budget hearings to do that. And then Friday, after Thursday's meeting, we do have Workforce Governing Board, which I, I'm going to sit in here. But I also have a 10 o'clock meeting with Zone of Benefit, so hopefully there'll be a quorum, so I can pop off that one and then go to the Zone of Benefit. And then Tree Mortality Task Force meeting. It's been a while since we've met because we've had a lot of other things going on, so that's going to be a really good time for us to catch up on everything that's been happening. The 17th is the Riviera Neighbor Fest, although I won't be able to be there. I am super supportive of the program, glad that's happening. And on Father's Day, I'm going to be at Bacon Fest because it is an awesome, awesome festival. And also what's happening that day is Operation Force Multiplier is happening again from South Lake Fire. They got the grant. Yeah, so that's going to, I think that's Sunday, also the 18th. And so that is a very proven program through South Lake Fire with grant funds. They, I think this is the third year.
Yes.
Of getting water fire extinguishers and McLeod's in everyone's cars. And so, you know, then you're expanding who can, who can respond to a fire and, and get some people working on it before it gets out of control. And, and it's happened so many times where they've shown up and there's somebody out there with their McLeod and their fire extinguisher putting out a fire. It's, it happened on the way home from the first event, so we're really excited. Big props to South Lake Fire. I just have to get one more McLeod for my car, but otherwise I'm set up. And then on the 21st, we have the, we had to reschedule the AAA meeting. Did you have that on your, and you're able to make it?
Yeah, it's Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, I have, I can, again, only do one hour of that because the, we're having our CPUC liaison come that day also, so I'll be meeting with her here.
Seguenza?
That is.
Antoinette Seguenza, yeah.
Yeah.
I had a good meeting with her last Wednesday.
Oh, good. And then on the 23rd is our Risk Reduction Strategic Planning Meeting, which we're all really excited about. And then back, I'm going to miss the Risk Reduction Authority on the 26th, but I will be here on the 27th.
I forgot something.
Okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, I just forgot to mention the, the town halls. I had one East Region Town Hall last Wednesday, was well, well-attended, and in that meeting, or in that town council meeting, Sheriff Howe was there to speak with the group, and that went really well. I think it's, you know, a lot of the communities, and I'm pretty sure in all of our communities, they, they, they have the very similar concerns, and it really helps when our, when our, not only elected officials, but our, our department heads go and explain challenges. And then Central Region Town Hall had a meeting last night, which went fairly well, too, except for my, my Zoom link didn't work out. Terry Logsthen came, the Climate Resiliency Officer, and did a wonderful job. It was well-received. And, and so, yes, there, there's a lot of things moving in that capacity. Like I said, the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center hosts the meetings, and they're putting together groups to, you know, make some, you know, letters of recommendation, and then they now know that they might be called on to do a report by Johanna. So I told them to be ready for that when she comes calling, so, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I forgot I have my Calberry Council meeting. Yeah, and I forgot, I have my Calberry Council meeting Thursday night after budgets this week. Are we done now?
I don't know. Are you?
Okay. So that, that's it for our open items. We do have a number of closed-session items to get to today, so I will read those off. 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. 8.2, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code 54957B1. 8.3, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2E1, One Potential Case. And 8.5, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And that is it for us today in open session. Thank you so much.